First, the city building official, Noel Bell. She is the head of our building division. Second is our new city engineer, I would like to announce that, Mr. Donald Smith. He's been with us now for about a week. And so he's still fresh, so take it easy on him.
And he hasn't run away?
No, not yet. With that, let me get back to the matter at hand. Today, as we passed the baton from the old council to the new council, I thought it would be most appropriate for me to give you an update of the road we have traveled in the land use arena in the city. I'll give you what we have done so far, and then also proceed to share with you what's left to do. But let me preface my remarks with this: That history is more than the path left by the past. It influences the present and can shape the future. Almost two years ago, when I studied material with the city, we had a major challenge in terms of our land use framework. In that, our comprehensive plan, our future land use map, and our zoning map were all in conflict with each other. Specifically, there were 16 areas that had serious comprehensive plan, future land use map, and zoning map conflicts. Now, as you can attest as council members, it is extremely difficult, if not impossible, for you to conduct your business in an uncertain environment. Especially when it comes to implementing development policies, when your instruments or your tools to implement those policies are not aligned. However, due to solid, diligent, and judicious work by the outgoing council, our land use attorney, and my staff, along with support from the city manager's office, we've been able to address this conflict. And the result is that now we have a situation where our comprehensive plan policies, the future land use map, and the zoning map are all aligned. So, that's a very good beginning. What's left? Having accomplished that, now need to move to the future, the road ahead. Having accomplished the alignment of the comprehensive plan, the future land use map, and the zoning map, we now need to move forward to updating our land development code. As you know, that's the document that has the rules, the standards, and the requirements that implement our development vision outlined in the comprehensive plan. That effort is already underway through the city manager's office. I was able to coordinate with my fellow department heads to get a sense of what they consider to be the troubling issues with our current code. And each one of them has provided by department or division. One more, one more. One more. One more, one more, one more. One more? Okay. So we ask each of the divisions and departments to provide at least of the issues that they were concerned with. Let's go through that list real quick. I'm not going to go through each one of those items, but you can see quite a long release of issues that we need to address in the new code. My department has got those issues over there. This is my division, go ahead. So, for you folks in policymaking, these are the areas that I'm going to need help with. We have issues regarding our planning areas. We need to define better what they are supposed to do, what they are supposed to admit when development come in. I did share with you, I think earlier on, the previous council, which I think I'll do the same thing for you to kind of bring you up to date as to what my thinking is. We have to get to a point where, when we describe a planning area, we indicate what it is that we expect development in that area to be, so that there's a clear expectation both from the public standpoint as well as the developers of what the intent of the city is. And so we'll be going through that. And then there are specific areas that we need to address, multi-modal transportation district. You know, you have, I know those that are still on council here have got some misgivings on the way it's being applied pays its fair share to the community. So, there are some thoughts that are going on as far as, do we do an impact fee the way we're currently doing it, or we do something different? So I'll bring those ideas to you so you can kind of decide which way to go. The other issue is, we have the whole harmless whole harmless issue with people who want to do fancy driveway pavers and so forth. That's been a problematic issue for staff as to how to handle it. And I got some ideas of how we can systematically address that issue so that it's not a problem the way it is today. And then the last issue is the utility requirements and so forth. So, I'm just giving you a preview of the things that I'm going to come to you within direction as far as policies concerned, because these are major policy issues going forward. In the interest of time, I was going to show you just my thoughts about what the new code will look like, but I'm not going to do that. I just want to close this up real quick by saying the following things. And that is that it is important for us to note that the alignment of the comprehensive plan, the future land use map, the zoning map, and the land development code are the cement that seals our shared vision of development in the city. It makes meaningful our unity of what quality development is in the City of Destin. Those documents, compact, looked together, defines who we are as far as development is concerned. So it's very important that we take it that way. So as such, this new council is now, it has now fallen to you to tackle the land development code update and seek that precious balance, and this is tough, between quality development and just development in general. And that's what you're going to be dealing with time and again, to seek that precious balance which is so often threatened. And so, it's now falling up to you to give us a code that gets that balance for us to be able to admit the kind of development we need in the community. So welcome to the effort. And let me close with this for the outgoing council. History is not the burden of one man or one woman. But, as you know, there are some that are called to share that burden of those challenges like you. It's a special breed, not everyone can do it. That's why we don't have a rush of candidates that come to do what you're doing here. It's a special calling, and we need to respect that. And it is a duty for the outgoing council members that, to me, they've discharged with dignity, determination, and distinction that I widely admire. So to them, I want to say thank you so much, and thank you for your service. I will take any questions that you may have.
I have one for you. Under your title, where you said policies needing further discussion, it seems like that's a discussion that's just prime time for a workshop-type session to where we can all brainstorm. Is that your intent?
Certainly.
For that aspect of it?
Right, I'm open to whatever format you want to take so that we can have the best discussion possible. I have some thoughts, and obviously you also do so. If we can have a forum where we can exchange those thoughts and get to a point where we can find that common ground, I think that would be beautiful.
I'll have that discussion with our city manager, and he can reach out to the council members.
Sure.
The sooner the better on that, to get these new folks' feet wet with it. I do have some people that have some questions for you up first. Mr. Destin?
Thank you, Mayor, and I would like to make a motion asking the city manager to set up that workshop for the council. I've read through this list of recommendations, and it's quite a long list, and a lot of them that I would wholeheartedly agree. But I hate to send you guys down the rabbit hole working on things that we don't agree on. So the council workshop is quite appropriate. So I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
I got a motion, a second, to have a specific workshop to establish policies needing further discussion, is how I'll frame that. Seeing any further ideas or discussion on that particular motion? Seeing none, let's go ahead and vote? Vote is unanimous, workshop it is. Thank you, Mr. Destin, thank you. Louis, don't go away, I still have Mr. Brayden.
Thank you, Mayor. Louis, thanks for introducing your staff earlier. My question is, are you fully staffed at this time?
Fully staffed?
Yes, sir.
Not yet. I have a couple more needs that I'll share with the manager as we come down close to budget time. I'm still concerned about the turnaround of time permitting permitting process in our office. We have some things that we're doing, as you know, we got the automation process about to complete, which will be a major improvement. However, my engineering office and the permitting office, it does need some help. And so I'll be coming around with a little shopping bag so you can help out.
So are you, are you fully staffed now with the budget that we have? Or are you looking for additional staff?
Currently, with the staff that you approved a year and a half ago, I am recruiting, as you know, the engineer is here now, which is a great addition. I've got two planners that I need to hire, but I'm in the process of doing that. So to answer your question, I'm not yet fully staffed.
I'd heard you lost one planner, I didn't know you'd lost two.
Yes. We are slowly becoming a training ground because we do so much terrific work. And folks that see the work that we do here, find it attractive in other places, and they pay them more than we do. And so, we're in that competitive environment, that's something that we probably need to address too.
Any further questions? All right, thank you, sir, appreciate your presentation. Look forward to the workshop. All right. Go ahead, Lance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Up next, we have the operation financial report going to be presented by Ms. Crystal Strickland. And when Ms. Strickland joined us full-time in June, one of the first conversations we had was about this kind of a report, and that I wanted to see this kind of a report presented on a regular basis to the council, one that was readable and not six inches thick. And she has, she has done that in the midst of COVID and during her first budget season. She's bringing the first report forward. I look forward to seeing these every month. And so I'll turn it over to Ms. Strickland.
I could even understand it, so she accomplished your goal.
Yes, good evening, council members. So this evening, I have presented to you two separate reports. The first one is the financial operations report, the most important piece to keep an eye on. So I have presented the general fund, the two CRAs, and then a sum of the fund balance. So on the bottom of the second page, you'll see a section called "fund balance", and I highlighted, I guess it's the bottom of the third page. This is the fund balance area, and you'll see an area I highlighted called "unassigned fund balance". So for those of you who come from the for-profit world, this would be your equity. In this case, we need to keep the unassigned fund balance at about the $2 million mark to account for all of the projects that are cost reimbursement projects. So this is basically the minimum balance that we keep to be able to cash flow all of the grant-funded projects that we have. Other than that, I'm here for questions, and I have all the details, and I would be absolutely delighted to speak to each and every one of you at your convenience. The second report that we have that I'm bringing forward tonight is our capital project report. So I have summarized the details on the capital projects by the major projects we adopted in this funding cycle. These were prioritized by council. On the far left-hand side, you'll see council objective number so that you can see which of these projects were the highest priorities for the most recent adopted budget by council. I'm really happy to report that 80% of the projects on this list do fall, or 80% of the money that we will be spending this year do fall within those top 20 priorities. So on a monthly basis going forward, we'll be bringing little updates to you so you can see how we're progressing from not started yet to out to bid, to contracted, to under construction, and then completed.
We done?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
All right, Ms. Ramswell?
Thank you, Mayor. Question. You were talking about the capital improvement plan and the different projects, and there's the labeling of the order. I noticed that, like, three, four, five, six, a few of them are missing. Is that because there wasn't an expenditure associated with that particular project? Or are they not on here for a different reason?
No, that's exactly why they're not here. Those, the ones that aren't listed here, the three, four, five, some of those, they don't have a monetary adopted budget with them. They're more of a, an operating-type project. Like accomplish land code use changes.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Ms. Abear?
So on some of these costs, if there's no funding, is there more money that you will have to come back to when you are finished with these projects?
Yeah, so some of them, this is, if you look at the adopted budget, which I would love the opportunity to walk you through, we've done a five-year capital improvement plan. And so a lot of the funding is streaming in over future years and future periods. So some of them that are listed here, they're on the five-year plan, but their funding won't start until next year or a future year.
All right, thank you very much. Like I said, thank you for the report, because even I could understand it. It was very nice to have.
Thank you, yeah, I'm always open to feedback. If you'd like some improvements or tweaks, or just have a question, please call me.
Thank you very much. Lance?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have tonight.
All right. Well, we'll see what time it is, real quick. Press on, Mr. Bowman, take it away.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. First up, we have item 5A. This is Emerald Coast Associates, Inc. requesting a major development order 2017 SP and preliminary plat approval of a major subdivision 2018 MS and conditional use 2001 CU approval. The project consists of 54 long-term residential townhome units along with associated infrastructure. The subject site contains 4.57 acres to be divided into 54 lots. The associated parcel IDs are 002S, 220310, 000E, E170, E17B, and E17A. At this time, if the applicant, any member of the public who plans on presenting testimony, and any member of staff who plans on presenting testimony, could please stand and raise their white right hand to be sworn in. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to provide is the truth? All right, thank you. City council, if at this time, if you have had any ex parte communications regarding this project, please disclose them. Seeing none?
Sitting on the previous board, this hasn't been presented to us? Is that?
No, you're fine on that. But, just for the public's sake, you want to disclose that there was a a board, an LPA meeting?
Yeah, this was presented to the LPA board, and the presentation was brought forward to us, and that was the first time I heard it at that time.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Schmidt. With that, I will turn it over to Ms. Kim Kopp.
Can you all hear me?
Yes, Kim, loud and clear.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and ask our community development director to introduce the item. And I also would like to enter the staff report into the record as the city's Exhibit A.
And for the record, does the applicant have any objection to that staff report being entered into the record? For the record, there is no objection.
Thank you all, welcome, new council and the existing councils. So yes, we're here to talk about a major development order and also a major subdivision for the Harbor Place Townhomes, located at Azalea and Melvin. As the city attorney mentioned, this is a 54-unit townhome and approximately 4.5 acres.
Any, any further comments? Louis, is that all that's presented from your perspective?
I will certainly take questions, but it has gone through our technical review committee, which looks at all the aspects of the ordinance, both from a comprehensive planning standpoint and also from the land development standpoint. And the project does meet and exceed some of those aspects.
Okay, and all of us in our briefing documents have seen the minutes from the LPA and the review process, correct? All those documents are done? Well, at this time, if there's no presentation from the applicant, I'll move right into the public hearing portion?
Hang on just a second, do you have a presentation? Applicant?
Go ahead, sir, state your name, address.
Members of the board, congratulations to the new members. My name is Dean Burgess, I'm sorry. Good evening, members of the board and new members, congratulations. My name is Dean Burgess, I'm with Emerald Coast Associates. We're the design engineer and representative for the owner applicant for the townhome development before you tonight. This is located at the southeast corner of Melvin and Azalea, that intersection, what's left of Wildcat Mountain. It's been a long undeveloped property, and we saw it as an opportunity to improve the area. A little bit of history on this particular project and the procedure that we went through. You may recall Mr. Zinguzzi presenting to you the discrepancies between the land use map and the zoning map. Well, we fell into one of those. Our particular property was in the ROI land use category and was in the MDR, medium-density residential. Those two don't coordinate with each other. So we went through a rezoning process to zone the property to its current ROI VR zoning, which does work with ROI land use category. There was a rewrite of the land development code as part of that, where some categories were collapsed. So a long story short, we've been working on this presentation and this project for about two years, and we're happy to be in front of you tonight. And we think we have a good project and good product to offer. Some of the, one of the things that's before you tonight is a conditional use. As part of this being zoned to ROI, townhomes are a conditional use under that category. They are long-term rental townhomes, and within ROI, single-family can actually be a short-term rental. So we saw that as an advantage, where we are, through doing townhomes, we're required to be long-term rentals, if there are rentals at all. So we saw that as a positive. Part of the things that we need to do as a conditional use is demonstrate to you, the board, that we have done good planning practices, and as a conditional use, we have mitigated any impacts in the transition from the industrial development to the south of us, to the single-family residential to the north and to the east. And as far as the land development code parameters, I'll go through them quickly. The allowed density is 12 units per acre. We're at 11.79 is our density. The allowable height is 35 feet or three-story. We're only at 18 and a half feet, two-story. Pitched roof requires a 60% minimum pitched roof design. All of our buildings are 100% pitched roof, no flat parapet roofs. Front setback required is 20 feet. We provide a 70-foot front setback. Side setbacks are zero. We provide a minimum 15-foot setback. Rear required setback is zero. We provide actually a 55.5-foot rear setback. Required open space is 25%. We provide 48%, nearly double the required open space. So basically, what those parameters I'm trying to demonstrate is we haven't just met the code. We've in many ways exceeded it, and in doing that, we've strategically and by design incorporated those in areas that abut the single-family residential areas. There's a single-family residential here to the east, and across the street to the north are also single-family residential homes. Fortunately, the streets provide something of a buffer. But we've provided our increased side setbacks, I'm sorry, front setback here provides additional setback from the single-family in this area. This 55-foot rear buffer here, coupled with the adjacent right-of-way, it's a 50-foot right-of-way, provides 105 feet of separation between building and property line. The increase in our reforestation trees has been, again, strategically placed in this area to try to provide the maximum amount of screening that we can against the single-family homes to the east. Part of our process with this development was a variance, which is in your report, I'm sure, and I'll summarize that briefly. As you're probably aware, the right-of-way that's to the east of our property is an unopened 50-foot right-of-way. There's approximately 23 feet of relief in about 65 or 70 feet in the middle of this area. It's a very, very steep hill. We looked at that, got with Public Works, and just looked at the impracticality of putting a sidewalk in that area, which was the requirement, to place a sidewalk along that right-of-way. So we got with staff and discussed a variance, and they agreed it was reasonable to request a variance from that. But we didn't just ask for a variance to not do it. We replaced the amount of sidewalk in areas that are in need of sidewalks. You may be aware that from our property line, there's a gap in sidewalks to the east. We will be connecting that gap with sidewalk. Also, it was brought up during that variance board meeting that to the south, we could provide sidewalks, or a sidewalk, that would connect down to Mountain Drive and connect to, there's a little tram stop right around the corner on Mountain Drive. So we agreed to go ahead and extend So we agreed to go ahead and extend that sidewalk to connect to that tram stop and make this connection shown here off-site that will provide a continuum of sidewalks around the property. And we think that that was a better solution than if we just went ahead and put the sidewalk in this unopened right-of-way. I think these larger thoroughfares will connect better and work better with the multimodal plans for that area of the community. I've read the staff report and concur with the conclusions of the staff report that we meet the land development code and comprehensive plan conditions set forth for this property and I'd be happy to entertain any questions that the board may have.
I have a few folks queued up here. Ms. Ramswell, you're first?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question. I had thought these were going to be just townhomes, residential townhomes, but you alluded to the fact that they could be long-term rentals. What is going to be the deciding factor on that, whether you actually sell the properties? Or what are your thoughts on that?
They will be platted and sold and so it will be the individual user, coupled with covenants and restrictions for the neighborhood. But at a minimum, they will not be able to be short-term rentals. And so if somebody does own a unit and wants to rent it, it would be required to be long-term rentals. The remainder of the units will be owner-occupied.
So there's not going to be a condition upon purchase, if you will, of an individual townhome that it must be full-time residence, that you are going to allow for all of them, if it comes to that, to be rentals?
There would be an opportunity for long-term rentals. Yes, ma'am?
I think you need to say that in the mic.
What Shane's saying is there's a state requirement that, well, actually, that does not allow restrictions on the owner to rent the property under the guidelines of the local jurisdiction, which your guidelines say it has to be long-term rental. So it can't be precluded by law from renting the properties.
Okay, thank you very much.
Ms. Abert?
Thank you. That's a great presentation. It sounds like it's going to be a beautiful little setup there. My question is, it's always about parking. How much parking have you got assigned to those units?
There's a maximum parking number of 135. We provide 120 parking spaces. That's about 2.2 per unit. And what we've done is provided each unit has a garage, covered garage, and a parking space. We've made sure that these driveways are long enough. That's been a problem with townhomes is you have a driveway, it's not long enough for a car to park in it. So we've made sure that these are long enough. They're a minimum of 20 feet long and with a car inside the garage. Then we have these additional parking spaces that are spaced throughout the neighborhood in areas where if there is a requirement for overflow, you have company visiting, they can be utilized. So it's a little over the required two spaces per unit. And I guess I've heard that there was some concerns about parking and will people be able to park on Azalea or Melvin Drive in the right-of-way? Absolutely not. That wouldn't be a good look for the neighborhood and that's not in keeping with the product that the developer wants to prepare.
All right, I've got a few more for you. Mr. Overdair?
Yeah, you know, traffic and congestion on the streets is always a concern. And I noticed in your presentation that they've got, they come up with 37 trips. How, what, what does that mean, 37 trips?
That's calculated on the PM peak hour. And so during a weekday, the anticipated number of trips during a one-hour period between 4:00 and 6:00 o'clock for the 5:00 rush would be 37 trips coming in and out of that development. That's, a lot of times that's confused with how many trips per day there are, but it's within that peak hour.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you. Where is the ingress and egress of the neighborhood? How does that work with the map?
Being on a corner, I'll stay near the mic but try to point this at you. There's one driveway access here onto Azalea and one driveway access here onto Melvin. And the reason that this is kind of snaked like it is is so that we can line up with the driveway access across the street. So, but there's two, so that you essentially loop in and out of the neighborhood. And this dead-end cul-de-sac serves these 16 units on the north end. Thank you.
I read somewhere in the briefing document, there was a mention of an HOA, that there may be a homeowners association related with this project. Is that, is that part of the sales process? Or is that the intent?
I'd be happy to let Shane elaborate on that. I know there will be an HOA. It's required for our stormwater permit and, you know, for maintenance of the roads are private. The accessways within the development are private. So there will be an HOA. Shane can elaborate on what the particulars of that HOA were.
This is your opportunity to present the project. So Shane, if you'd like to explain to the council how that process works and what the HOA can and cannot do, because I'm curious.
I'm Shane Cannon, developer of the project. Yeah, so the streets and infrastructure and signage and landscaping are all will be maintained by an HOA through a common area assessment for every property owner. The property is fee simple, so each person going, just like your single-family home where you have a deed, every property will have a deed, be platted accordingly. But it will be restricted to their access and the governance of the HOA. So that would be everything from lighting to noise restrictions to satellite dishes and all that will be governed within the HOA, what is permissible or not and enforced like you would at a condominium complex as well. But although these are fee simple, the HOA still has its rights to implement and maintain the environment.
And there's a great need for affordable housing in our community. What's going to be the base asking price of your townhomes? Because usually townhomes are cheaper than single-family dwellings and buying the property and all that.
We've been asked that a lot. The problem with, you know, six months ago, I was buying OSB at $11 a sheet. Now it's $25 a sheet. So it's really hard to pinpoint an outgoing price without knowing exactly our cost. But these will probably start out in the low to mid 300s.
All right. Ms. Abert, you got another question?
Yes, Shane, the driveway for the parking, is it going to be set up sort of like how you have Osprey, where that driveway is really long next to the home? Is that how that extra length is?
We've got several pad sites, so some will be longer than others because we were able to get the length and others will be side-by-side parking. So, and unlike Osprey, we have a lot of the area, we have community parking as well that's been capitalized in the cul-de-sac near the entry, one near the hill and the turn. We had about five bank parking. So it's, each pad has a little different topography and so we were trying to take advantage of it in that sense as well.
Any further questions for Mr. Cannon or his agent?
This will be the council's first conditional use application, is my understanding. And in the conditional use criteria I've been reading, one of them is compatibility. And I would ask staff, did we have any compatibility study done by experts?
No, there wasn't a typical compatibility study done, as this is a private development. However, the project was looked at from a compatibility standpoint from three criteria. One was existence zoning. Second is the use itself and then the comprehensive plan policies that are encompassed in that area. And so a review of that by staff and the product produced by the applicant led us to where we are today.
Well, I know that in the past, when compatibility was a large part of our development order process, we were required to have expert testimony. And the only cases we ever lost were those where we did not have expert testimony. And I was trying to look around to see what's around it, to see if this project was compatible. There's, I think, a single-family project directly to the west. And I don't know what the density is, but the only thing that stands out to me real clearly is that 12 units per acre is probably not compatible to that. Across the street, across Azalea, you know, I'm not sure if that's convertible. I like the project. The only problem that I have with the project is the density is at the very top of the limit. And so we have 54 units with 108 spaces.
Yeah, we, back in the day, we did compatibility on almost everything.
We did.
And the city would hire a compatibility guy and we'd hire one and they were always made us instruct it. Whoever I hired, of course, came out with a study that just said the developer's project is fully compatible and somebody else had to come out with one and then you fight, then you're in court and all that kind of stuff. We're in industrial in the south, so it's very difficult to get a single-family home backing up to a microbrewery or a carpet store or all the stuff that is industrial. ROI is residential, office and institutional. So unless we were maybe going to put a school or some other institutional-type dwelling, of which I don't do institutions, but when you get down to the residential side, you're either into the single-family or you're into some sort of multifamily. So apartments could have been an option, but this is less intense than apartments because it's fee simple. So it becomes more compatible to the single-family side. We have 100-foot right-of-way to the north separating us from a single-family on the north. And I think that's a 60-foot right-of-way to the west separating us there. So we are buffered pretty good from the only other single-family neighborhoods and then we directly abut the industrial. It's a good transition use, a townhome community for single-family slash getting to an industrial zone. To me, it's a good, good compatible use.
And as I said, the only, I'm not exactly sold on that. It's, you make a good argument.
Can I?
But 108 spaces for 54 units, if they have two cars each, that's, I'm going to take that up. So it looks to me like the parking is not all the adequate. I understand that under the multimodal transportation that we are using now, there was a substantial reduction in how much parking is required, both in a project like this and a commercial development, restaurants, et cetera. The only problem is, and I think our planning people alluded to it earlier when they said we need to look at multimodal. Problem with multimodal right now is we never built the infrastructure necessary to implement multimodal. Didn't build the garages, don't have the shuttle systems. So we're going forward with a system that has a 30%, possibly more when you add the credits in, reduction in parking without implementing any of the things that were necessary to achieve those reductions. And that's a, that's a real problem and it stands out on this one with 108 or whatever it is. And of course, then you have a maximum parking that was put into the multimodal so that we would force people into the garages that we never built. You know, as I say, the only issue I have with the project that looks like good is just too much density for that site and for the traffic that is going to be generated around. You know, I've got an issue with that.
We are excited. We have 48% green space. That's 48, that's nearly half the project is green space. Our parking is 120 units, but ironically, your code has a maximum. You can't put more than 130, which is just part of the multimodal thing. So if we had 120, if we had 131, we'd be in violation of the code.
And that's what's a problem with our multimodal at the time. When you build a restaurant under multimodal, you're getting about half the parking that you should have to have a successful restaurant. That's something that we're going to have to address very soon. As we go forward, continuing to use these multimodal numbers, we're just making a bigger mess than we have right now.
Mr. Brayden?
Thank you, Mayor. That was the only thing that I was concerned with was when I was looking at it with the maximum of 135 and providing 120 parking places with 12 bicycle racks. It just, that just seemed like there was four or five units. People were just going to, won't even own a vehicle. They were going to ride bicycles, you know, and that's not going to happen. So that was, that was my concern, was we've always talked about how they get the benefit of the multimodal, but you don't have to pay the price or however you want to put it. But that was my only concern. Thank you.
We are encouraged. I know that the comp plan suggests that we revitalize the downtown area. In fact, it's been CRA for maybe 15 years now with very little new development, quite honestly, in the residential side. Now the harbor walk and it all set its stage to bring people back to the downtown, create businesses. This is a great opportunity for folks that can live and walk to work, ride their bike. You're right, I wouldn't ride my bike down Airport Road, but you know what? If I worked on the harbor, I wouldn't mind biking from here to the harbor. I wouldn't mind, if I worked at Bochamp, I'd walk. If I worked at Dewey Destin's, I'd probably walk or ride a bike. So this is a first time of a new development that has the opportunity to take advantage of some of the multimodal that, you know, you're not really going to get them to buy in across town and get down to the harbor. But hopefully, these folks will. They'll ride a golf cart if we have a golf cart-friendly ordinance or walk or ride a bike and provide for workforce housing, you know, where these folks aren't on 98 every day. So they actually could save trips on 98.
Ms. Ramswell?
Do you know at this point, how many units are going to be one-bedroom or two-bedroom or three-bedroom? What that breakdown is?
None are going to be one-bedroom. Most, all are going to be three. We've got maybe another floor plan where we use a two in a study. But they'll be mostly three bedrooms. Or, like I said...
I was thinking if you had a lot of one-bedrooms, that would maybe alleviate some of that parking situation. But now you're saying two and three, so...
Yes, mostly, we have some two in studies that just make for larger two-bedrooms and lesser of a third.
Thank you, Shane. Anything further else you'd like to present or talk about? If not, and if we don't have any further comments or questions from the council, I'll go ahead and do the public hearing portion of it. Are you good?
Sure. We'd just like to reserve, you know, the opportunity to come back and respond to public comment. Thank you.
Go ahead. You can just leave that button on, actually.
Okay, we'll do it.
Come on up and clean that up and we'll open up the public hearing portion of this meeting. And I think after this particular public hearing, we're going to take a five-minute break before we run and jump into our second one, just to give everybody the heads up. We'll take a break after this hearing is over with. Okay, at this port, this is a public hearing and so at this portion of the meeting, I'm going to go ahead and open this up for public comment. I want to remind everyone to just state your name and your address and you have three minutes to give your point of view. So I see the first-hand raise, so come on up and have at it. And then I'll just, I'll do the same thing. I'll start from this side of the room and work that way and then I'll check with you, James, and you, Ray, on this particular project. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Tammy Groth. I live at 202 Doffin Estates. First of all, congratulations, everybody. Welcome in, Dewey. Good to see you back. I just want to address a couple of concerns, because I know when somebody buys a property, we can't tell them what to do with the property. That's not something I'm here to talk about. My biggest concern is, I live across from the development that Shane is looking at doing, is the same concerns, the compatibility. I mean, 108 cars, minimum of two cars each. We have a two-lane on Melvin and a two-lane on Azalea. It's not three-lane, it's not four lanes. I worry about my children and the kids in the neighborhood with lit traffic, you know, crosswalks with the additional traffic coming on. And I also worry about the bicyclers. We talk about bicyclers. We have increased some sidewalks, but our rules state that if you ride a bike, you have to ride it on the street, not on the sidewalk. So those are things I'm worried about. I'm not so concerned about the subdivision being townhomes. I'm just worried about 54 townhomes. Maybe if we could scale it back a little bit, it would work a little bit better. But we are single-family homes. We all live on half acres. The whole, if you go look at the three neighborhoods around, that's 12 townhomes. On a half acre would be six townhomes. Think about that where you live now. That's a lot of townhomes in one little area. So I just want to voice my concern that some of the ladies wanted to come, but they have children who are in sports and can't make it to the meeting tonight. But so I was just addressing my concern about the compatibility, the traffic and our children's safety with the subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, come on up. Just give her a moment to wipe everything down, make it nice and safe. And state your name and address and go ahead. You've got three minutes.
Hey, good evening. Josh Tatum. I'm a business owner at 150 Azalea Drive. There we go, down the west end of Azalea. So as a business owner, we have approximately 20 people that work here in Destin and, you know, 65 globally. But here in Destin, we feel like this is a great solution to bring housing to our staff. So we speak in favor of it.
Thank you, sir. Up next, raise your hand. Don't rush the microphone all at once. Anybody wants to comment here? I'm working towards the center. Come on. Don't hesitate. This is not Chippendale where you have to go... This is not Chippendale where you have to go. After you, no, after you.
Hi, it's Karen Bilger, 202 Dolphin Estates. Congrats.
Got it.
My biggest concern is, how are these cars going to come in and out of Azalea and Melvin, when they already have subdivision that really wasn't even informed? I put out a flyer, because I happened to get a...I actually happened to get something by mistake. So I inquired with the city planner, and I asked for all emails to actually go through everything, and where they're proposed to go out, there's a home that has like driveways right there. So how are they going to get out if all these cars are going to work left to right? Right there, right when they say they go out, there, right there, is a crosswalk that does not have any really good signage. There's no lighting. Kids cross there to get the bus. So that's a concern, and even if they come out of Melvin, it's the same thing. The crosswalk is right there, and there's kids standing there waiting. So they're getting dropped off, you know, everybody works. So it is a concern as far as the time, as far as traffic. I'm kind of worried about the study. Just something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else looking around? Go ahead. James, I'll be looking at you here in just a second.
Good evening. Carl Trammell, 3823 Engine Trail, Shane's a neighbor down the street. Our family owns the warehouses at 505 Mountain Drive. That's 250 linear feet of budding the south side of this project. I'm not really against of the project. I've always known a similar project we built, like he's going to build. But why would a local developer want to build so dense? Have two concerns, vibration and fencing. I'm concerned about vibration during the development of my block warehouses, like bulldozers being used instead of front-end wheel loaders, and for land clearing at site work. At the recent resurfing of Melvin Street, like three weeks ago, my property experienced intense vibration, which causes extensive damage to my buildings. I don't know why the packing machine was in vibration mode for asphalt. There was also an older home on the corner of Mountain in Melvin, and vibration damage could drastically reduce our property value. Roller packers can be used without vibrating. How do you make repairs on a concrete building with cracks? These cracks will not show up until years later, and the site work will take quite some time. I don't know, six months? I have no idea. It's a long time. They may put up some soil vibrational monitors. I know nothing about them, don't trust them. The city of Destin, the staff, the contractors, I hope I don't have to call you and complain about the vibration issues. There's a massive amount of sand to be removed. Have any of the councilors driven by all three sides of the site? Have any of you got out and walked up on top of the sand dune and observed? Melvin Street was just milled, paved, and partially striping. It must have already been scheduled, but the striping, they only painted part of it. Probably got wise, they said, we'll save this paint because the dump trucks are going to wear the street out. The city should have the power to demand using Azalea Street, as it has many cracks that would be repaving soon. Don't put the dump trucks on Melvin Street. Put his impact fees toward Lesion-Azalea Connector. Also, when the cross-town connector goes in, fire trucks can reach the west side of Destin much quicker. Maybe the fire department should donate funds toward this connector. The Destin City's taxpayers' money. If the city needs some white sand for a project, like the old cement plant, you may have an opportunity to get some cheap sand. That sand's got to go somewhere. I have a 250-foot linear wooden fence, six feet tall, 20 years old, and is still standing. Yes, the sand has eroded under some of the posts. I do not want my property elevation to be raised at all. As I read a survey, the new elevation on the homes abutting this fence, kids will be able to crawl under my fence, making a safety hazard. On my retaining fence, you come back 10 feet, my retaining wall is taller than this podium, and that was to hold that sand dune back. So the fence protects people coming on my property. If the fence goes or is compromised, people can jump off that five-foot wall into my working lot.
Can you wrap it up? You're done. Out of time, so wrap it up if you can.
I've got 250 feet of property.
Sure.
Maybe one more paragraph? I'm going to try for it. We're a left-off path. As I read him, here we go. 10-foot wooden fence. Okay, that part covered. What future property owners want to look in their backyard and look at my warehouses, greenhouse, the Napa store, chicken coops? Why can't you put up a wooden fence himself, not I? I do make concerns over losing the fence and building cracks. Thanks for your time, and thanks for serving. Any questions? Any questions?
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Ms. Trammell? Seeing none, thank you, sir.
Next, anyone here in the center? Thank you so much. My name's Michael Fell. I'm the chairman of the Destin Commerce Park. It's a business community at the corner of Commerce Drive and Azalea. There's 18 businesses over there. Guys Glass, Heim Signs, building and engineering consultants that Josh Tatum spoke about. We also have Gulf Coast Electric. We have over about 85 employees that come to work at these locations, and then get dispatched out throughout the community. All these people that work here need housing, and this would be a great project for it. Love to see it get the vote, so we can have an opportunity for our employees to live near where they work. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else? Go ahead, come on up. There you go.
My name's Joshua Garrett. I'm a property owner at 539 Azalea. It's about 100 yards east of the property in discussion. I'm very excited to hear about new development off of Azalea. Everything in that area is very dated. My property was built like 1983. I've done lots of repairs and upgrades, but the whole, this whole area needs a new community. The property values in Destin have been very stagnant in that area compared to the new construction areas in Santa Rosa Beach, 38, stuff like that. So having a new community like that in, you know, old Destin would be very helpful. Also, Azalea is already used as a shortcut for 98. So you've got the sheriffs constantly speeding down Azalea. You have all the tourists, all the local residents, myself, they use Azalea as a shortcut from the bridge to Benning Drive. So that road is highly traveled, as it is, by people commuting to work and just cutting around the traffic on 98. So there's already a lot of traffic there, but a newer community would be good for the area, I think.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? One last shot in the audience? Seeing none? James, do you have anybody queued up to speak?
No, sir.
No? How about you, Ray? Outside of the...I saw we had an email here on our desk. Okay.
If there's no other public comment, let's let the applicant respond.
Okay, and that's what we'll do at this point. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing portion of the public hearing, the public comment portion of the public hearing. Go ahead.
Thank you again, Dean Burgess with Emerald Coast Associates. I'll try to be brief with our responses, and just take them in the order they were given. And if I mispronounce anyone's name, my apologies. First was Ms. Tammy Groth. She spoke to compatibility concerns, traffic, and density concerns. And again, we did a, it wasn't a compatibility report, it wasn't a compatibility analysis, you know, that's required as part of the conditional use. And the things that I pointed out, primarily the buffering, the clustering of these toward the center of the property, and away from the single-family homes, is how we feel we did a good job of mitigating that. A 70-foot setback along Melvin Street is significant, and that will be a vegetated 70-foot setback. In addition, along that setback, there are very few units. We have our cul-de-sac, our retention pond, and again, these were done in part, the land falls this way, fortunately, but it also worked out well to mitigate the impacts. Literally, there's two units here that will face Melvin. The remainder of these units are setback even further than the 70 feet, and we think that will mitigate those impacts, as well as the landscaping. Again, our reforestation is, fills in those gaps in those areas. To the east, I had already talked about the essentially 105 feet that will be between us and our neighbors to the east. Traffic. Townhomes produce a lower rate, trip rate, per unit than single-family homes. And again, combined with the anticipation of using the multimodal that's available, and bicycling in certain instances to get to the downtown, and the proximity to the downtown, I think is a real consideration that will actually be used, and it's not just a selling point. I'm going to be brief with the people that were in favor, but I do want to reiterate their reasons for being in favor of it, primarily were to have, there's a need for townhomes in the area, for a cost-effective way of having a single-family home that you own, that you're not renting, or you're not in an apartment. And I think all three of the people that spoke in favor, that was their biggest concern, and I think it's a real asset to the community, to have people owning their own property. Next was Ms. Karen Bilger, or Bilger, I believe it was. Access, signage, and concerns with safety at the intersection. I think the, her concern was at this intersection of Melvin and Azalea. We are doing improvements with a widened sidewalk here. We are doing a crosswalk at this intersection to make it function better. So that, we will be adding to the multimodal and the ability for students, as I understand, they come down to Mountain where we said where the little tram stop is. I believe that's also a bus stop for the schoolkids. So this project will help to coordinate and make that sidewalk system work better. Sinage and lighting along that area as well, we do have as part of your multimodal requirements, and what we selected to do was lighting. So we will have street lighting along these sidewalks that we're putting in, as well as some benches for seating and so forth. And again, I don't think that's just meeting multimodal requirements, it's functional to this area that I think they will be utilized heavily. Next was Mr. Trammell. And during the LPA meeting, we discussed his fencing. The fence will be analyzed. If it's in good shape, it'll remain. We are intending to fence the entire perimeter of the development, so if that fence is damaged or in poor repair, we will go ahead and replace that. There is a good, a large disparity between grades, particularly this portion of our site is very high compared to the adjacent property here. We will be lowering this, so that disparity is, that he was concerned with, is reduced. And these will be more evenly matched as far as elevation and grade. And I believe that was all the comments that we had.
Do you have a question, Ms. Abir?
I have just two quick questions. You're saying that where the kids are going out to get on the bus, which Ms. Karen Bilger brought up, that you're turning that to where it's going to be more lit up, changing the crosswalk, making it more functional and more sight-worthy?
That's correct.
Is that your intention? So that it will avoid the danger that the anticipation of those families? Plus, there is a different area that the bus picks up than what's anticipated? Is that correct?
It's my understanding that down on Mountain Drive is where the school bus comes. And we are providing that sidewalk, that was part of our variance. We're extending the sidewalk south and around the corner to that bus stop. And yes, this intersection, we got together with Public Works and worked out where they saw was the best place for those crosswalks. You can see this will be the one that we're adding. This is the existing crosswalk. So there'll be a uniformity there of crosswalk, matching up the crosswalk.
And more lighting?
And more lighting.
So that there won't be the anxiety of that danger for the kids?
Correct.
Okay.
Early in the mornings, when it's dark, that area will be lit up by the lighting that we're adding.
And your ingress and egress isn't in that intersection anyways?
It is not. It's actually located from this intersection. This driveway is probably three-quarters of the way down our property away from it. Similarly, this lines up. Of course, you need to line up with your intersections, but fortunately...
My second question was, the individual who's got the property beside, that he's worried about the vibrations that could damage his building, are you using that type of equipment that would cause the kind of vibrations that could crack any of those businesses?
I don't anticipate vibratory equipment being used on this. We did do a vibration analysis report as part of our submittal, but I don't anticipate. I don't see a need, you know, for the roads that we're building, and the two-story structures, I don't see a need for vibratory equipment.
Mr. Brayden?
Thank you, Mayor. What is the average square foot of these townhomes going to be?
Shane, are they 17, 1800, just under 2,000?
17, 1800?
Yes, sir.
And the sidewalk that you got the variance for, that you don't have to put in, where's that located?
The variance, and if I may approach, so we can see. This was the right-of-way where the sidewalk was built, along here. And this is the...
There's no road there.
Steve.
It's dirt.
And...
Is that where...
It's sand hill.
...driveway to this here man's house. And so you literally have sidewalk along the driveway, and then this would have to be accomplished with stairs or something. There's no way to get the ADA compliant. Where these are all ADA compliant sidewalks. The additions, basically, took the area along here, and we're actually coming up with square footage of sidewalk here and here. But what we require here...
Okay, thank you. My only other comment was that, I mean, I know we heard from the public, and they talked about, you know, needing the housing there for the workforce, but to me, that's, it goes right back to the affordable housing. You know, people have asked me over the years, you know, as a city councilman, you know, what can you do to bring affordable housing? Well, you know, a home like that, at 300, 300, I figured $325,000, the 30-year fixed mortgage, I figured 3.75 was at $1,505 a month before taxes and insurance. That's not affordable housing for dishwasher, you know, waiter, hostess, whatever. And I know Mr. Cannon's not going to pay the kind of money he's paying for that property and put, you know, homes on it, or townhomes, for $125,000 apiece, so you can have affordable housing on it. But to me, I don't feel like it's affordable housing, you know, for the workforce around.
Councilman Brayden, I agree. When I was growing up, 300-some thousand dollars was a rich man's house, but we also didn't have $15 an hour minimum... didn't have $15 an hour minimum wage when I was working for $4 an hour. Things are changing. These apartments around here that y'all have approved, their average rent for 900 square feet is 1,600, 1,700, and 1,800 a month. So a house payment at 1,500 would be pretty attractive to some of those apartment dwellers to maybe pony up, save up their down payment and get there. It doesn't seem like it, but...
I agree with you 100%, I'm not saying that, you know, I don't agree with it.
It's just, it's a different environment.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just saying that I don't want the business owners that came up and spoke to think that, you know, when they're paying a guy to install glass at $15 an hour, you know, I don't think he's going to be able to afford a $325,000 or $350,000 home, but, I mean, I like the project. I'm not saying don't build it because, you know, nobody's going to be able to afford it.
Oh, no, I, look, as a business owner, I'm paying $20 an hour just to get people to show up, and I hope they do a good job, and that's just to clean up my yard. So I don't know where it's going as far as wages and such, but I'm happy, honestly, if anybody needs work, to pay them $20 an hour just to be a day labor. And you multiply that out, they're making a pretty good living, in my book.
Ms. King?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I like the development. I think it's raised by a developer who does projects, has done some projects similar to this. The issue I see is, it's not a matter of being able to afford 1,700, 1,800, 1,900 a month, it's being qualified to buy a house that's $325,000. That's all I've got.
My only comments is, what will go here in its place when we talk about compatibility? It's going to be another apartment complex, or is it going to be another warehouse, buildings lined up like what's across the street from it? So we do need a buffer, a project of some kind. I am a strong proponent of changing the CRA down there and provide places for people to live so they can live, work, and play in the Harbor District. I'm hoping we'll see some lifestyle centers even more expensive and bigger than what Mr. Cannon is proposing, as we underground 98 and make that Harbor District a real, a pleasing place where people want, instead of driving across a bridge and heading to 38, they actually want to stop there and live or vacation. So, and the last, the only other comment is, Shane lives here, I coached him in wrestling at high school, he hasn't left, he's a local too, and all of us have seen his projects throughout this town, and they always do a really good job. And it's always aesthetically pleasing, and it's an addition. His project that he just finished on Airport Road was a good project. So I, you know, this ain't some folks coming in from outside from Atlanta, some investing group or something like this, it's a homeboy trying to put together a project that's going to enhance that area. He's a businessman, so he's not going to do it at loss, I mean, we're not kidding ourselves there, but I'm in support of the project even though I don't get to vote, because it kind of, it steers us in the right direction for the Harbor CRA, and more importantly is, I know what kind of work he'd do, and I think it'd be a good project. So that's just my two cents worth. You guys got to make the vote and the decision. So, thank you, unless you guys got some more, I'm going to go ahead, and I guess we need to make a...
Let me just make sure real quick that, staff, do you have anything else to add? Does not look like it. So if the applicant has nothing further, this would be the discussion deliberation portion of the quasi-judicial hearing. Council's free to discuss amongst themselves, make a motion, there is a recommended motion in the packet, so.
All right, well, here's what we'll do, following Robert's rules, is we'll go ahead, and I'll entertain the recommended motion, and then we can have further discussion based on that motion, and then subsequently a vote, so.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion. I move the City Council approved proposed major development 20-17-SP, major subdivision 20-18-MS, and conditional use 20-01-CU.
I'll second.
I got a motion, I have a second, and even though we've already had made comments and discussion, I'll open it up to the council. Does anyone have anything further that they would like to add? Dewey?
I do. Thank you, Mayor. This is our first conditional use applicant, and I know that the new guys and I have not done a conditional use, and I guess no one on the board has yet, but my understanding is a conditional use means that this is allowed with conditions that the council thinks appropriate. And as I say, the project, I like the project, it's too dense. The point made by Dr. Ramswell about how many bedrooms, well, the applicant says there are three for most of them, you're talking about 150 to 160 bedrooms. If each person in there has a car, and if this turns into workforce housing, they will, you're talking about needing 160 parking places. So the parking is not adequate. Now, a condition that this board, this council could ask for would be more parking. Another condition would be less units, but what we're going to do here is build a project that doesn't have adequate parking, especially if they're rented out, which they most likely will be, if they're going to be workforce housing, they will be. And so I would caution the council to exercise the condition, part of conditional use, if you think it's appropriate. Thank you.
Any other discussions? What, go ahead.
Is there any way that the developer could take out maybe 10 units, or would it combust
We have an area that we can add another, how many? I'll let the engineer tell me for the record, but I know we can get another eight, 10 unit, I mean, 10 parking spaces. Right here, we left it, we left it open space for general purposes, and we knew we had a cap on parking within the code, but we can reach that cap without violating the code, which would increase the parking spaces and other...
15 spaces.
15, we got room for 15?
We could probably get 15 spaces in here, yes.
Yeah, so we could get to the maximum allowable by code of the 130 and, excuse me, 135, by utilizing this green space here that we'd set aside for basically open space.
That begs a good question for our land use attorney. In a conditional use, are we allowed to ask for more parking than the code requires? Do we have an answer to that? In other words, since it's conditional and you can put conditions in, are we allowed to exceed the cap?
If you determine that the project is adverse to the public interest, as it is, then you could potentially exceed the maximum in the MMTD for parking.
Well, I think that's a yes, we could do it.
Yes.
Thank you.
So Councilman Destin, without doing the physical layout, I'm just relying on my engineer to tell me that he believes we can maximize or increase another, how many?
We need 15 to get to the 135.
So he believes he can get 15 more parking spaces, which is pretty substantial. That's a third of the development at getting another space per unit.
That would be a step in the right direction, but I didn't make the motion, so I will give the folks who did make it the opportunity to go forward with that.
I'm comfortable with amending the motion if the applicant is comfortable with that. The only other thing I was going to add was, you know, I live in an HOA, and the HOA restricts me to two cars per unit. Is that not a function that the HOA could do?
It absolutely a function. I run an HOA on my new development, and we do the same thing about...
The HOA could limit how many cars are going to be there.
Yeah, per resident can only have so many cars, but the extra parking spaces, I mean, we're not opposed to that.
But I would, so I would amend my motion to include the requirement for the 15 parking spaces, and I don't think there's anything that I can, I can't dictate to the HOA that they have to have just two cars per unit, but that's something I think that you can work on with the HOA.
Is the, there's amendment to the motion, the person to second it?
I did, I'll second.
Okay. All right, so there's amendment to the motion, and a second for that. Up next is Ms. Ramswell. Dewey, are you done at that point?
I was going to tell them, I appreciate change in the motion, but we have no control over what an HOA does, we have control over what we do here tonight.
Yes, okay, so noted. For the public record, go ahead, Ms. Ramswell.
It's moved. Everything I was going to say is what it said now, so...
All right. Mute point with Dr. Ramswell. Mr. Overdeer, you good? All right. Is there any further discussion? We have a motion now that's been amended to include the additional 15 parking spots, which the developers has agreed to locate, so if there's no further discussion, we're going to go ahead and take this to a vote. We have a motion, we have a second, and we will take this to a vote. Ms. Abir? Keep pressing. Eyes haven't so moved, you've been approved. At this moment, Mother Nature dictates that we take a five-minute break. Meanwhile, I'll stuff myself with cookies. Kyron, we love you. And I must admit, before we had the Plexiglas, Kyron would share his extra cookies with me.[630.72][630.75](Laughter) Because he always got the last ones. He always got the last ones. All right, we got everybody? We're missing, um...
Mr. Destin had to leave.
He had to leave.
All right. Yeah, I wanna make note, too, that Mr. Destin had to leave the, um, the meeting due to a, uh, a medical, um, appointment he has tomorrow, and some things he has to take care of. And I've been there and done that, and I'm glad it's him and not me. So what we'll do now, Mr. Bowman, is take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. We have next item 5B. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2031 CN. Ordinance of the City of Destin, Florida, amending Article 7 general provisions of the city charter, create a new section prohibiting the conveyance, sale, lease, or other transfer of interest of city parks without a unanimous decision of the city council. Providing for a referendum on the charter amendment, providing for a ballot question, providing for a vote at the March 9, 2021. Special election on whether to prohibit the conveyance, sale, lease, or other transfer of interest of city parks. Subject to certain exceptions as provided in the charter, providing for coordination with the supervisor of elections, providing for conflict, severalability, and an effective date, and this is a public hearing.
Thank you, Kyle. Um, it is a public hearing, but before I open this up to public, the public comment portion of it, Ms. Cop, would you like to, uh, give us a little clarification about this ordinance?
Sure. Uh, this ordinance, uh, I'll just quickly review the process. It involves a charter amendment. Charter amendments require referendum votes, um, by law, so if we are to amend our charter, what we would have to do, as the city is, first, you would consider and pass this ordinance on first reading after the public hearing. Uh, you'd see it again on second reading. If it passes on both of those readings, it would then go to the voters for consideration. Um, at that time, if it's approved by the voters, um, it would only then be effective, and only then would our charter be amended. Uh, most likely, this would occur in March. It's intended, as written, to occur in March, as far as the election date. Um, there's still some, some bit of issues to work out with the supervisor of election. He has indicated the cost would be about $10,000 to $12,000 to the city, um, since we have our elections in November now. But most likely, I believe he'd be able to do it, uh, in March. Um, besides that, what it would actually put into the charter is a prohibition on the city selling, leasing, or transferring its interest in any city park, um, without a unanimous vote of the city council. So in effect, that means if any one council member voted no on the proposed sale of any city park, uh, it would fail, and it would be prohibited.
All right. Thank you, uh, Ms. Cop. Um, so Rodney, I got you queued up here. Go ahead.
We don't want to open it to the public first?
Sure, sure. So you just wanna stay in the, the pattern here?
Uh, either way, I was gonna make a motion, or...
Uh, let's, let's go ahead, we'll have a public comment, and then, uh, I'll look to you. All right? At this time, uh, we'll begin, I will, uh, open the public comment portion of our public hearing on ordinance 20-31- CN. I'll do the normal here tonight. I'll look over here to this side of the room, and work my way this way. So is there anyone that would like to make a comment on the, uh, first reading of ordinance 20-31- CN? Starting over here, see any hands? Anybody wants to step up to the plate? I'm working my way to the right. Anybody? Anybody wanna make a comment? Seeing none. James, do you have anybody queued up for any comments online? Ray, was there any emails or text messages to this effect? All right, well, Mr. Brayden, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve ordinance, uh, 20-31- CN on first reading, and direct staff to advertise for second reading.
Second.
Hey, I got a motion, I got a second. Um, is there, uh, any discussion? I don't see anybody queued up. My only hesitation on this, because every aspect of that, I think this is good, is I wonder, in future councils, if you had that one guy or that one lady that just, no matter what, whether it was reasonable or not, just was like the resistance. Oh, I mean, you have those folks in, in, in government, plus in your neighborhood. But, you know, so, so, and my personal thing is, like, a supermajority, you know, five out of seven council members, would be probably, um, we would probably see a little bit better government, because you may have, in the future, an issue, and of course, this was, this stemmed out of our, our lease thing with the fire department, but you may have an issue that, that, that was supported by the community even, and by the majority of the council members, but that one person would shoot it down because you couldn't get that unanimous vote. So my, my recommendation, I don't know if anybody wants to change that deal, would be to make it just a, a supermajority, five out of seven, um, meeting of the minds. I, I might be out of line here, but that's just, I just know people, and we've, we've all run into that obstinate person i- in our, in the, in our lives past, and it would be extremely frustrating, I think, to see that happen, maybe not to us, but further on down the line. Kevin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, going along with that train of thought there, um, I do recall, I believe this came up due to the, uh, fire station situation. So at that time, there was a lot of, uh, citizens and others, uh, using the, um, concrete plant property as a possible o- option for a fire department. So if something like this were passed, charter was, you know, voted and approved by the public in March, you know, in the future, that particular property would not be able to be leased, transferred, or given to somebody for a situation, right? Is that, I mean, that's...
Unless we have a unanimous...
Sure, unanimous. So, I mean, it's, uh, it's hard to predict the future, but like you're saying, um, we don't know what might be needed at some of these properties. Uh, and I agree with you that to get a full majority of people to approve something is tough, um, and it's, uh, I think we might be in trouble if we have that set in stone, because we don't know, there might be a need at one of our city properties that we all would like, the public would like, like you're saying. Even just recently, the public recommended that particular property, you know, as an option. I know that's no longer on the table anymore, but just using it because that's fresh in our minds, so...
Yeah, and I think, I, I think the intent of the ordinance is true, is, is to prevent a four-to-three vote on a controversial issue that's before the council being passed, when, you know, half the community was not happy and the other half wasn't, and the same thing with the council members. I think by, by trying to prevent the p- the probability of a problem with, with a totally unanimous vote, but making it a supermajority, I, I think that might solve some of that problem if you had a real controversial issue. Um, so, I don't know. I just wanted to, you know, get that out there to give people some, a pause for thought on if, if we wanna go that far on that aspect of it by the totally unanimous vote, or make it a superma- a supermajority. And we already have a few things in our, uh, tr- uh, charter right now that require a supermajority to be passed. It can be just a simple, um, uh, majority vote. So my, my two cents. Uh, Mr. Brayden?
Thank you, Mayor. If I had to guess, I'd probably are, we have 99, 99, at least 99% of our votes are unanimous up here. Um, and my only thinking of it is, is we're buying, you know, millions and, you know, tens of millions of dollars of property now, you know, as hard as we can go for the city, and if it, if something did come up on one of our pieces of land that was in the best interest of this city, in the best interest of the citizens of this city, and, you know, I couldn't imagine it could not be unanimous, um, for it unless somebody had a personal reason behind it. Um, so it's, you know, to say a unanimous decision is kinda rare, you know, it'd be tough to get. It's, I mean, 99.8% of our votes are probably unanimous, so...
Yeah, and, and that wasn't my, uh, insinuation at all, that unanimous is hard to get at all. I'm, I'm just talking about that one instance, or a couple instances, where if you did have that, a council person that just voted no, just to vote no, which we've seen somebody that used to be over here do it, most of the time in jest, but, but, but that's why I just brought up that idea. But your points are very well established with our voting record, that we do vote unanimously a lot.
Yeah, and I mean, to that point, I mean, a lot of times, we, we don't all vote the same way, and there's been a lot of split decisions, and I, I think that part of the issue that brought this whole thing to a head in the, in the beginning was the fire department and the park down there, and, and I don't think that, that this council, the council that was sitting there, and even the council maybe right now, would have voted seven to zero to, to do it one way or the other. Um, so I just think it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a good idea to, to have a, a supermajority. I don't know that you'd ever get seven to vote on some of those controversial issues, and that's, that's what this is designed, I think, to do, is to, is gonna be controversial issues, and to get all seven of us to, to say exactly the same thing. I don't think that's gonna happen. So I would, I would be more for, for a supermajority, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't actually support this one.
Well, we do have a motion, and we have a second. I made my two cents' worth, and I think everyone in hell has it. Does anyone have anything to add? Go ahead, ma'am.
Rodney, would you be willing to amend your, your thoughts on this and make it a supermajority?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think a, a supermajority would be, be better than, than anything, it just, um, I don't know, everybody was so excited and on board and gung-ho to save our right-ofways, but they're not gung-ho to save our parks, and, I mean, I, I just don't, they don't add up. They don't pass the smell test to me. Um, you're more, more concerned about uneasement or right-ofway, and, you know, to get the public to pass that, to let that go to somebody, that, that probably won't never happen, but to get a unanimous decision up here for what's best in the, the city of Destin, you know, if we need a fire department on one of our parks, you know, and it's desperately needed, and with our community, then, you know, why wouldn't it be unanimous, or, you know, to do it? But, um, yeah, I, I think we need something, um, in place, so, um, yeah, I mean, I don't mind amending my motion to, to, um, make it, um, supermajority.
I, I think...
The second will stand.
The second will stand? Yeah, and, and I think, I think it's, it's good governance to apply it that way, because even in that controversial discussion, there was three or 400 people that were adamantly against it, but there was also three or 400 people that lived there that, that needed the service to them, that was in favor of it, too. So, you know, I, I, I think this is a good compromise for us moving into the future when we're gonna make a change to the city charter, and it also is familiar with some of the other aspects of our city charter that require a supermajority, say when hiring or firing a department head or a city manager, that requires a supermajority. There's wisdom in that, I think, versus requiring a unanimous decision, because that would most likely never take place in that aspect of it, too. So I think that's a good compromise, and with your amended motion and the second, is there any further discussion on that? And this is the first reading? Seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and take it to a vote.
I think Webb's working on that.
Rodney, the vote is unanimous. So moved.[1483.62][1483.65](Laughter)
Mayor? Mayor, if I may, I'd like to confirm with the attorneys that this goes back to first reading?
Yes, they'll have to go back to first reading.
It'll go back to first reading for the public record. Thank you. Kyle? Alrighty then. Kyle?
Next, we have item 5C. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2033 CN. An ordinance of the City of Destin, Florida, relating to livery vessels, providing for findings of fact, providing for a 12-month extension of ordinance 1930 CN, temporary moratorium on livery vessel permits, directing staff to develop recommendations for regulation of livery vessels, providing for severalability, providing for expiration of moratorium, and providing for an effective date, and this is a public hearing.
Thank you, sir. Um, Teresa, I see that you have a comment. Would you wanna wait till after the public comment period, or do you have something to say now? Okay, go ahead.
Um, I talked to, uh, staff this week, because when I saw this was gonna be on the agenda, and I was at the city council meeting, when it was suggested that we get a workshop put together, and it was promised to the livery vessels, and, you know, folks that were here that were, you know, saying, "This is not fair, you know, we've been held captive to this moratorium going on two, three years." So I asked Lewis if he would explain why a workshop would be like putting the cart before the horse, and explain the reasoning why they have to do this, and it does not prevent those that wanna sell their businesses, et cetera. So Lewis, would you please, for the record, tell them, tell the, this, the council and the, those listening, why this is a second reading?
Uh, thank you. Um, I think it's, it's important to mention that this is a similar effort like the one that was held in Key West. Uh, what's key is that you establish a baseline of information from which to establish a capacity study, uh, and then you then study and have information to share with the public to then make good decision. Uh, we have met a couple of times this year with the livery folks. Uh, we know most of the issues that they have. As a matter of fact, we have started, uh, making the changes that they've suggested. Uh, as you recall, um, two meetings ago, uh, the previous city council did extend, uh, the timeline for application, and I know currently Joey Foggione's group is amending the application process to make it simpler, consistent with some of the suggestions that they've made, and so that work is underway to, 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 um, alleviate some of the concerns that they have. But we certainly must do, uh, a capa- capacity study from a position of strength, not from a position of weakness. Uh, yes, the study has been delayed. As you know, COVID hit us, uh, in the middle of this year, and also we're delayed for funding. Uh, all that is now, uh, resolved. We are prepared to start the study in March to capture the spring activities and also the, um, uh, summer activities. Uh, the AMI Corps is, uh, ready to move forward. I've got meetings coming up, uh, next couple of weeks to ensure we roll out, uh, the process. And you, as a council, you'll be, uh, selecting the capacity study committee to oversee the study, uh, and as I mentioned to you when we met, that committee could be the vehicle for all the issues that, uh, the livery folks may wish to share, uh, so that we have an ongoing discussion going on, uh, as the study's proceeding. So there's plenty of time for, um, uh, discussion and there's plenty of time for, for input. Uh, we don't see the two things being incompatible at all.
And to reim- re-imply the fact that the livery vessel folks that have businesses that they're either trying to sell, or they're trying to, um, leave the area, they don't have to worry about this moratorium stopping them from promoting their business or selling their business, this is mostly to stop brand-new business from coming in, correct?
Right, expansions and new businesses coming in. Anyone who has been with us last year is free to apply for this coming season and so on, and I'll, uh, let, uh, the land use attorney explain as far as the, uh, the legal aspects of, uh, selling of property, uh, for, of, for businesses and so on, to kinda clarify that up, but it is not affected by this, uh, uh, moratorium at all.
You all need clarification on that?
Go ahead, Kim, and then I'll get to you, Dr. Ranswell, next. Go ahead, Dr., uh, Kim.
Okay. So, as the community development director indicated, existing businesses can still sell, transfer, or lease their businesses. The only thing that existing livery vessel businesses cannot do is expand to a greater number of vessels than what they have currently had permitted, previously had permitted. So they just need to stay as they are and not expand during the moratorium. And that is because the goal is to have the harbor study evaluate the safety and environmental impacts in the harbor prior to addressing what future regulations, if any, you all would want to consider. So, the only thing that is really prohibited by the moratorium is for a new business that's not existing to come in, or for an existing business to expand greater than what it currently has.
Thank you, Ms. Kopp, for putting that on the public record and for the clarification. Dr. Ramswell, I see I have you up next.
Thank you, Mayor. So Mr. Zenguzi and Ms. Kopp, I understand completely where y'all are coming from, and I do agree with what you're saying, and I understand it. The one thing that does concern me, though, is that clearly, we have a very large group of individuals that this impacts personally, and they don't have clarification, and there's still some confusion remaining on the issue. To the extent that I know we received an email, at least I did, this week, a very well-put-together, seven-or-eight-page document of different concerns that multiple of folks in this segment actually have concerns about. And so, one thing I'd like us to consider tonight, and I know we talked about it briefly at the last meeting, but the concern is that they're not being heard. And if it's not going to disrupt anything from our end to have a workshop in, let's say, early December, I don't understand why we wouldn't want to do that, to listen to these folks and get clarity on these issues that seem to be very concerning to them and also need clarifying to some extent. I read through some of these, and it makes perfect sense, but then I read through what we're presenting, and it makes sense, but clearly, they're not one and the same thing. So I would really like to be able to see if we could table this second reading, and perhaps wait till the beginning of January, or even at the second meeting in December, and then have the workshop at the first meeting in December, just like I've said, to beat a dead horse, to get some clarity on all these different issues. So not only the folks that this impacts understand and have clarity, but also all of us up here, and we're fully aware of what these changes are and why they're not in this ordinance, or if they should be, maybe we put them in there. So that's, those are my thoughts.
Okay.
Let me ask you a question, Kim. The reason we're going through this and the timeline that we're going is because the moratorium restriction is about to expire, correct? And if we let it expire, then they can increase, they can apply for more permits because the moratorium's gone, and we defeat our whole purpose of exploring whether we're going to keep it limited, or we're going to grow it, or what have you. Is that the true issue? Is that the moratorium's going to expire is why we need to go beyond the second reading?
So let me just respond to that, and as well tell the council its options. So, the moratorium is already expired as of November 1st. So if it is not passed tonight on second reading, yes, people will be able to make applications for more livery vessels for new businesses, and so on. And if they meet code, they would have to be allowed. So, it is a policy decision for the city council to determine if it is still the policy of this new council to keep the moratorium in place pending the harbor study, which is to occur in March and the summer, according to what Mr. Zenguzi has told us. The other, with respect to the workshop, you all can do a workshop with or without the moratorium. So the policy decision is really, do you want the moratorium in place? If you do, you can pass it on second reading tonight, and you can schedule a workshop at any time. It can be, you know, next week, it can be in January, it can be whenever you all deem it appropriate. And if, at that workshop, you determine that the moratorium is no longer what you want in place, you could repeal it, just as you can with any other ordinance, which means the same way you pass it, you would repeal it. You would have two hearings of a repeal ordinance. So passing it right now for the year does not lock you in where, you know, you couldn't change your mind later if new information came to you that justified that change in your opinions. So, you know, unless you know tonight that you want it to lapse, you could consider going that route. The other issue that maybe Mr. Zenguzi can explain, if I don't get this information right, because this is being done, as I understand it, from staff on December 7th, is that you all will be appointing a committee to evaluate the issues in the harbor and the harbor study when it comes. And so at that point, those individuals may want to hold the workshop and then provide recommendations to council. So you do have those options. Of course, if you decide not to pass it tonight, the moratorium lapses. That's also within your discretion to do legally. So you have several options before you. I just want to make sure that everyone knows that if it is not passed on second reading tonight, or if any changes are made to it that will require it to go back to first reading, the moratorium will not be in place. And also, what I said before, that if you pass a one-year moratorium and then change your mind, it could be repealed.
Thank you. Thank you, Kim. Go ahead.
So when are applications processed? They're not processed, if the moratorium lapsed, when would more, when would, when would applications be processed?
Because you passed the ordinance at the last meeting to allow processing to start in November, so it would go from November to the end of February.
So, people could go ahead and submit and get their applications processed right now?
And I don't know if you remember, but Mr. Destin specifically asked Michael, he goes, "So basically, you want the moratorium so you can expand your business?" He goes, "Yes, that's right." So, I mean, at least he was honest, which defeats the whole reason we had a moratorium in the first place and why we're having a capacity study. So...
Well, I know this is a public hearing, and I'd really like to hear from some of the folks that this impacts, and see what their thoughts are on the suggestions made by Mr. Zenguzi and Ms. Kopp.
Okay. We will have the public comment portion in just a second. Skip?
Yeah, and I don't know if I'm maybe, we might wait till after the public comment before I talk about this.
I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
Have there been any permit applications so far, since November 1st? Was there, like, any current permit applications since it's lapsed?
I do not know at this point. Joey's office is the one that handles the application, so I need to check.
I don't believe that would have happened. I don't, I don't think it has occurred, because with the pending ordinance, they probably would not have been accepted, because the first reading of the moratorium extension occurred the day after the lapse. And if an application would have been submitted during the pending review of that ordinance, it probably would have been rejected. Now, with that being said, I don't think there was one submitted, but it's been pending this decision of council tonight, essentially.
All right. Well, at this point, then, we will, this is a public hearing, so we're going to, we're going to open up the public comment portion of this meeting, and then after that, I'll close it, and then we'll have further discussion. Skip, you'll be queued up first. Go ahead, ma'am. Hit the red button, state your name and address, and you got three minutes.
Good evening. I'm Peggy Matthews, 1520 Big Sky Way, Tallahassee, Florida. I'm the Florida representative for the American Watercraft Association, which is a national organization located in DC that advocates for personal watercraft owners, rented and private. I'm speaking here again today. I was here on the meeting on the 19th, with some of y'all weren't present, and I watched the meeting last week. I'm here to provide clear and accurate information on Florida law. Okay? If I may, at a distance, may I?
Kyle, we need to have that introduced into the public record at some...
Sure, that'd be fine. If I could get a copy, too, I'd appreciate it.
All right. And hand a copy to our city clerk. This won't go against you. Three minutes.
Okay, and this, this is the actual language taken out of 327, which...
Ma'am, I have a question before you get started, down here.
Sure.
Over here, this way.
Oh, okay.
Are you being paid to represent anybody here tonight?
Yes, I'm represented. I'm being paid by the American Watercraft Association, and some of the liveries to represent them. And I'm more here to explain the law as it was written, okay? I actually was very heavy in the legislation when this was passed in 2001. And I just want to make sure that you had accurate information and that you could see the language for itself. When you talk about, you cannot have an ordinance that discriminates against personal watercraft. Discriminating against personal watercraft means any ordinance or regulation that is in place that doesn't apply to all other vessels. It can't get any clearer than that. I'm not going to take the time to hand this out, but I will give this out, and it can be distributed later. This here was a letter from the Department of Environmental Protection to NOAA in 2001 stating the legislative intent of this law. And at the middle of the second paragraph, it talked about the intent of this new law is to prohibit any regulatory body from enacting regulation that discriminates against personal watercraft. Can't get much clearer than that. Okay? You talked about why, there is no other place in the state of Florida that has an ordinance like this, okay? Because it's against the law. And so with that, the other thing that's at the end of the page that you just got, was also, that was language out of your ordinance, okay? It's section 13148, talking about the transferability of those permits. And if you read it, one, it's very confusing and unclear, and two, nobody would ever buy a business not knowing if they were going to get permits or not. And that's exactly what it says. People cannot move their businesses, you cannot transfer your permits. No one's going to buy a business without permits. So, there was a legal opinion on this that was presented, that's going to be presented tonight, and also can be emailed on you. The attorney said that it states that the permits cannot be transferred. On safety, FWC, Fish and Wildlife, presented the accident reports for 2020 to date. Okay, there was, this is for the county, not just for the city of Destin. There are more vessels rented and more recreational vessels, 16, versus 17, seven personal watercraft involved in accidents in the county to date. So, when safety is talked about, deliveries provide extensive safety before they allow people to go out, and that's required by law. And there's, like I said, there's no other place in the state of Florida that has an ordinance like this, because it's against the law. And there's plenty of places that's just as busy. Down in Key West, the Ship Channel, you've got cruise ships and personal watercraft using the same body of water. In Miami, in the Miami Marine Stadium, there's a tremendous amount of boat traffic in there. There's plenty of places that have dealt with this issue without being discriminatory against personal watercraft. And in closing, I would just like to say that the ordinance violates state law, discriminates against personal watercraft, and it also creates a significant loss of revenue to these liveries by not being able to expand their business, sell their business, et cetera, that they have been cheated on over the years since this ordinance has been in place. And I'm open for questions, and you have my contact information at the end of that page.
Go ahead, Ms. Brayden.
Thank you. Are you aware of any place in the state of Florida that requires livery vessels to have a hired captain, a licensed captain on every vessel? I've been told in the state of Florida that today was some counties or cities have passed that ordinance that...
I'm not aware.
That you're not aware of?
I'm not aware that any place had to have. I mean, I think there's probably captains on charter vessels or something. I'm not sure. I'm not in that...
Skip?
Yeah, just for clarification, how is it that this ordinance is discriminating against the personal watercraft?
Okay, because the personal watercraft's the only class of vessel, rented personal watercraft, that you're mandating that they have permits to operate, and you are also regulating the number of vessels that they're allowed to operate versus any other vessel?
I believe, seeing how I'm a licensed 100-ton captain, I know about the requirements of US Coast Guard, FWC. In this particular statute, it's discriminating against personal watercraft, and that is types of vessels. Now, your interpretation is livery vessels. The particular statute, as I understand it, is you can't say that you can't have a single-engine center console operating on the waterways, or a jet ski versus a kayak, or that type of thing. And this ordinance doesn't do that. As a city, we have the right to issue business tax receipts for people to do business in the city, and the requirement for livery vessels to have a permit for their vessel is part of that BTR process. It's not discriminating against a vessel per se, according to Florida statutes. So that's a, I guess it's an issue that might have to be dealt with in the court of law, but...
Probably so.
You telling us that we're discriminating against virtual watercraft, I beg to differ, because that's not how an ordinance reads or how it's applied. It's not applied to a particular type of craft, a personal watercraft. These are not personal watercraft. These are leased vessels that are not maintained by a licensed captain, or operated under the same safety requirements as a state license guideboat, or a charter-for-hire operation, or even some of our cruise boats, sailboats with six-pack vendors. All those people that are taking people out for dolphin washes and cruises, they're all Coast Guard inspected. They all have permits and licensed captains. So, maybe we don't have an ordinance against those, because they're already under governmental regulation. This is governmental regulation on unattended-for-hire personal watercraft that's in a harbor, unlike Key West, because I've been to Key West. Our body of water that these things are operating in has a channel that's about 60 feet wide, and it's full of not just livery vessels. It's got every vessel known to man, thousands of them. In fact, we have thousands of livery vessels, don't we? So, you know, I mean, it's your opinion, you represent the industry, and I respect that. But I just want to make some clarification, that that particular statute that says discriminate against personal watercraft is a description of the type of vessel, not how it's being operated in the business.
Okay, but personal watercraft, and I know you weren't here the first time I represented, originally, all your statute was, I mean, your ordinance is addressed, personal watercraft is jet skis. And jet skis is a trademark for Kawasaki. Personal watercraft, whether they're Sea Doo's, or Yamahas, or Kawasaki's, they're all called personal watercraft. That is a class of vessel that's defined in Florida statute and in the Coast Guard. That is a class of vessel. So, you're correct, the difference of opinion, and however it's resolved, but from all over the state of Florida, when no other municipality or county has implemented anything like this against personal watercraft, and only personal watercraft, and no other vessels, I think it's very clear the intent of the legislation. And I will hand this out on the way out, so you can read the intent of the law.
All right. Thank you. Up next, while you hand that out, just give us a moment to clean up our... Thank you, ma'am. Go ahead.
Greg Fisher, 35 Red Bay Court, San Rosa Beach.
Greg Fisher, 35 Red Bay Court, Santa Rosa Beach. So I spoke to some of you the past week. Some of them I emailed you, only one that wrote the document that Preble just mentioned with the input of some of the folks in the industry here. Couple of things I want to mention that just want to echo upon Peggy's presentation here, but a livery vessel defined by Florida statute 37.02 is a vessel leased, rented, or chartered to another for consideration. This means that a pontoon boat, charter boat, sightseeing tour boat, kayak, or personal watercraft, yes, a kayak is considered a vessel by Florida law. Section 13-141, the definition of City of Destin ordinance 1702 CC modifies the definition of livery vessel to discriminate against personal watercraft and motorized boat rentals. The definition states a livery vessel is as defined in Florida statute 327.02, but does not mean... So, folks, this takes away from the livery vessel definition, a charter vessel under the control of a US Coast Guard licensed captain, or paddleboards, kayaks, canoes, or any other vessel not powered by an internal combustion engine. That makes only personal watercraft and pontoon boat rentals fall under the ordinance, which is discriminatory. Another thing, jet ski, as Peggy said, is a brand name of Kawasaki. A wave runner is a brand name of Yamaha. A Seadoo is, well, a Seadoo. These are all personal watercraft. And another thing that Kim Cobb said just moments ago, she said livery vessels cannot expand. Well, that doesn't mean that sightseeing tour boats and charter fishing boats, they can expand. They are livery vessels. So we already have misinformation being shared here at the city council. There's a reason why no city or county in Florida has regulations like this, especially in places like Miami. We book tours. We book personal watercraft rentals in Miamis. There's a lot of personal watercraft activity. You think that there might be something going on there. In 2012, Palm Beach County banned personal watercraft at Sunset Lake and South County Regional Park. Within months, the ban was overturned due to violating Florida statute 327.60. My guess is that a county attorney or county officials are probably involved in that ban, and guess what? It got overturned. Although I wasn't able to investigate it entirely, my guess is that a county attorney like that would have reviewed it. So we have an opportunity to right a wrong, and either repeal or extend through ordinance, livery vessels in Destin. If the moratorium does not continue, it's important we clear up the language so that companies don't have to rely on the city's vague interpretation of the permit transfer process, and landlords can bring in new tenants if one leaves. Any questions?
Any questions? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Okay.
Up next. Come on up. This is not a cheerleading session to folks. Just pat them on the back as he goes back to his seat. And even though you have a mask on, I know who you are. State your name and address.
John Stevens, 40, 25 Indian Trail. I actually wasn't going to talk, but then it's more or less with the process of application. I guess it was told that we can start applying now. Back in October 21st, I actually emailed staff asking with the second reading of the livery ordinance if we can start applying in November. I was told that we were not because of the new software program was not up and running until January.
But Ms. Cobb just stated for the public record, the reason they are not accepting them is because we have this pending ordinance. So there's a third reason. Did you have that one down?
Well, but she also said that you can apply starting November 1st, but I was told you couldn't.
Well, but she, there was a caveat to that, correct, Mr. Bowman? The caveat was that we have a pending ordinance that would prevent any additional permits outside of the moratorium to be approved.
But if the moratorium is delayed or whatever...
That's correct. The moratorium has expired, but the acceptance of permits is being delayed until the council makes a decision whether to pass an extension of the moratorium. Is that correct?
Well, the moratoriums are expired, so it's not extension.
Correct. Right. This is. This ordinance is. Go ahead. Could you clarify, please?
And I think Kim is still on, if she would rather clarify, but...
Go ahead, Kim. If you heard that exchange, I just want to make sure I'm repeating correctly.
No worries. It's just more or less like if staff said one thing.
Mr. Mayor, I think what she said was that the second reading of the application change of date was read shortly after the November 1st day. That has been approved as second reading. So now the application window is open. It's officially open for applications.
You have Ms. Cobb online again. Ms. Cobb?
Yeah, I don't know why it wasn't letting me put the video on, but the moratorium lapsed on November 1st, which was a Sunday. The meeting was Monday. It was passed on first reading. Had it not been passed on first reading, applications would have been accepted, but it was passed. So for that reason, there's a pending ordinance doctrine. That means we're not going to take the applications during the pendency of an ordinance that's about to pass and allow things that violate that ordinance to occur. However, if it is not passed tonight, applications will immediately begin being accepted tomorrow. So that is a policy decision for the city council.
So is the software working?
Just for clarification for you.
Yeah, I guess the question, though, is the software working? Because I was told that the software is not working, so we can't apply.
I'm not with any of that issue. That would be a question for staff that deals with... This is the first I'm hearing about software.
Webb, could you answer that? You're the software guy, or at least kind of the software guy, even though James is the software guy, and Matt's the software guy. Do you have an answer to that?
I don't have full context of this conversation. What I can tell you is that our Compass software will be going live in January, and that could be what was referred to. But again, I don't have full context of the rest of the conversation.
So just for the sake of argument, can people, if we don't pass this tonight, can they submit an application tomorrow and it be processed now?
Yes. Yes. If this is not passed tonight, they can submit an application tomorrow.
Okay, that's my question.
Straight from the attorney. Go ahead.
That's all I got.
Okay. Thank you so much, John. All right, come on up. I'll look a couple extra times, so in case something, even though you didn't hold your hand up earlier, but something said that causes you to want to comment. So I'll give everybody in the room plenty of opportunity. Go ahead.
Ed Rogers, 500 Harbor Boulevard, Island Sunshine Water Sports. One question for our land use attorney. I know Mr. Zungazi said that we could sell our business even with the moratorium underway, but if I sold my business, I wouldn't sell my business. I'd sell my assets. It's a little bit different than selling your business, and I'd sell it that way for liability purposes. And probably anybody who wanted to buy my business would want to buy the assets, the name, the phone number, but not the business itself. And so I want to clarify that if somebody wants to sell their business, that they can sell those assets, and you're basically selling your business, but there's not a catch-22 and you come back and say, well, they didn't buy the business name, and so they can't buy your assets. Did you hear my point? I don't know if she...
Kim, did you hear?
No, I need the council to direct me to answer questions, since the council is my client.
Okay. Well, that was, that's one question. The other thing, if you guys are worried about not passing this tonight and getting a flood of applications for folks, I wouldn't worry about it. I've filled out an application every year that there's been this application process. Nothing has changed in my business in all that time, not one iota. This year, my application was approved at the end of October. Although nothing's ever changed, and it's been approved every year, it took to the end of October. Some of it is staff, and I have nothing against the staff. I think that they're all good people, but they're young, they're inexperienced. I was told this year that my fuel was illegal. Well, it wasn't illegal, but I was told it was illegal three times. So I had to have the person at DEP send them an email to say, no, it's not illegal. So, and I think the answer to it is the workshops. You know, if we have regular workshops and we're talking to these folks, they're going to learn a lot from us. And I've not met a single colleague that's unreasonable, that expects something unreasonably, that, you know, it's a communication thing. We don't hear about it until you guys are voting on it. And then we read about it and go, holy cow, this is really going to affect my business. And I don't think there's a need for it. If we're having some kind of communication with staff, most of these things would be worked out. The other point I want to make, last point, is the moratorium, we don't need it. We have a parking ordinance. If you don't have parking, you can't have any more boats. I'm one of the small guys. I own my own property, but I only have parking for 10 boats. So I have 10 boats. I don't have parking for anymore. I can't add three or four more boats. I'd love to, but I don't have the parking for it. And most of these guys are maxed out in parking. Some of them had to drop boats because of parking. In fact, I know at least two businesses that dropped boats because of parking. So, you know, if the parking ordinances are enforced, then you're not going to have a flood of boats because you guys see the harbor. You know what it's like. Thank you.
Just give you an extra time. You've been operating under the moratorium now. This is what, third year of the moratorium?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And how's that moratorium affected your business, other than the fact you've been taking forever?
I had the best year I ever had.
Okay.
And listen, I think a lot of guys will say that, that, you know, our concern is, you know, if we have restrictions where we can't sell our business, or we can't operate our business, that, you know, once one thing's passed and we're made out to be the bad guys, and we're not the bad guys. I know somebody made a point about, you know, the fishing charters, and maybe we affect them. I will tell you, I looked after I read that, I sent over 300 folks that rented from me last year to fish in charters. Any captain that walks up and gives me his card, we put it on a list, and we rotate them, and we send people to those guys. So they get a lot of business from all of us. And I know all the other guys do the same thing. We're all in this business together. Somebody wants to go on a dolphin tour, or a fishing trip, or whatever it is, we're going to point them and send them in the right direction because we want our customers to be happy.
Okay. My last comment to you is, so you've been operating under the moratorium. It hasn't affected your business. In fact, you had a good year. And the attorney and our staff made abundantly clear that it doesn't affect you from selling your business or your assets.
Well...
Under the present moratorium. And do you agree that the moratorium, until we get the harbor capacity study, before we make any legislative decisions, is a good idea?
I can...
Or you just don't like the fact that there's a moratorium?
So let me speak for myself.
Okay, that's, I'm asking you.
Yeah, I'm an old guy that this is a job in retirement. So 10 boats for me is good because, you know, my knees don't work, and I, it's a lot of work. It's fun. It's a labor of love. But there's a lot of young guys, and they're trying to grow their business, and they're trying to have something for their families and their kids. And so, you know, what affects me is different for some of these other guys because they're... And if I was their age, I'd be wanting to grow my business, too.
You got a question?
Yeah, a quick question. Can I ask Ms. Cobb to answer the fact that what is the business? Is it the assets, or is it the business name, Ms. Cobb?
You're on mute. Unmute yourself, Kim.
Kim, you're fine.
It's showing me is not muted. You can't hear me?
We can hear you now. Go ahead.
They can sell it in whatever manner they want to, as long as the number of vessels either stays the same or is less. They just can't expand. So they can sell their assets. Also, let me clarify what has been erroneously stated regarding the code language regarding permit transfers. What that means is that a permit can't be transferred. And what that means is that you can sell your business, transfer your business, sell your assets, lease your business, but the new entity that takes on your assets or your business has to simply get another permit under their name so that the city has that information correct. It doesn't mean that you can't get another permit. So under the moratorium, when you transfer your assets or your business, the new entity gets a permit under their name, and they are allowed to do so under the moratorium.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Kim. Thank you, Ed. Next up, I know there's some other folks that want to chat. Anyone else have any comments? I wanted to give, my questioning was poignant because I just wanted to hear a little bit more from you, Ed. Go ahead. Come on up, Michael. It doesn't matter. We got time.
My name is Lee Partu. Oh, my bad. All right. My name is Lee Partu, 168 Stone Gate Drive, Santa Rosa Beach. And I've been in a lot of these meetings. I don't really say much, but at this point, I need to step up because, as you said, you want to hear from the people that this is actually impacting. To Ed's point with, you know, it hasn't affected his business. Well, it has affected my business. My business is growing, and it has a cap line, and I'm having to turn guests away. Over 300 phone calls a day on average this summer. So I'm not saying I want 300 boats, and I get that point of it, but I'm turning business away. I've lost revenue that was there because of what we've done as a business to grow, and then we've had to move business down to Fort Walton Beach. And you guys have seen that. A lot of the businesses are moving away. So this is down the line is going to have an impact on all the businesses in Destin, not just our business. Less boats, there's less traffic here, there's less people here, there's less revenue in the Harbor District completely. As far as emissions, all of my boats have carb-three, ultra-low emissions. Well, what does that mean? Just know it's the gold standard of emissions for boats. So if anyone wants to bring up my boat versus a diesel fishing boat engine, my boats are not doing anything near that. Let's see here. When we talk about regulations and stuff, I'm all for, you know, safety checks and protocols. And you said our boats don't have COIs. Well, Officer Maltese from Florida Fish and Wildlife does come with trainees, not this year, but with trainees every March. And he teaches them how to board vessels and inspect people at my marina on Oclusa Island. So I would think that something along that lines would be more better fit to everybody if we go along that route versus cutting down businesses, get more involved with everybody, have more policies in place to help people out, and to make sure there is safety involved, instead of guessing, well, it's the boats. Well, we don't really know that. And then, let's see here, we got that, and then. And we have a lot of good kids in this community that are growing up in this industry. It's a great first job for them. So as we reduce the rate of kids that we're going to be able to put into jobs and put into the workforce and train and to add into this community, they're going to go elsewhere, just like all of the businesses just going to move elsewhere. So I'd hope at this point, we'd move away from this. We spent three years with a moving needle. We've had our permits every year, just like Ed said. Maybe it was June, maybe it was in March, but we did everything the right way, whereas other businesses for the last three years have not had a permit at all. So for us to have followed these rules, done what was asked of us the whole time, for other businesses who have not have ever got a permit, just seems a bit unfair at this point. So structurally, this needs to get adjusted before we do anything else. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I have a question for you.
Go ahead. Hold on.
Where's your business located here in Destin?
So I am the Director of Ops for Aloha Pontoons in Destin. It's 404 Harbor Boulevard.
Is that on the harbor?
Marina Cafe.
Marina Cafe.
Yes, sir.
And so how many more pontoon boats could you have there with the parking you have available?
Over 40. We're permitted for 30.
So you have enough parking to have over 40 boats?
Yes, sir.
At Marina Cafe?
Yes, sir. Am I correct? Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, Michael.
Thank you. Mike Abbott, E530 Harbor Boulevard. I'm not against the moratorium at all. I'm against this moratorium in the way it's worded. There's a couple of things in here, one being certainly the state statute issue, which not only involves the moratorium, but it involves the overall livery vessel licensing process, because that included jet skis, discriminated against jet skis also. So they could have repercussions. They'd go back in the last three years. Okay? Basically, that's one of the issues. Basically, that's one of the issues. I was happy to see that everybody, the new council members signed in tonight, and they took an oath to defend and uphold the Constitution of the State of Florida. And in that Constitution, there happens to be a little statute that says there's no discrimination against personal watercraft. So I'm not an attorney. I think we've gotten legal opinions, and the legal opinions that we've gotten somewhat differ from the legal opinions that the City Council's getting. Okay? You can understand these people over here. These are good people. They've gotten legal opinions, and the legal opinions are telling them that it's not as easy to sell their businesses as your staff is telling you. So there's some confusion there. Okay? What is the, is it better to do this quickly, or is it better to do this the right way? And the right way is to take our time. City made a mistake. They should have never extended the time period for November and December until we had a workshop and worked out all the details, and then they could issue new permits if they wanted, once everything was worked out. Your lawyers get together with our lawyers, we all get together in a room, all you guys, all staff, all the members. I started renting four jet skis in 1991 on Destin Harbor. I had the first four jet skis. Two, a couple of years later, I had the, two of the first pontoon boats on Destin Harbor. So I've been doing this for 30 years, guys. Okay? So I've got some experience, I kind of know a little bit about it. Okay? I'm not real smart, I'm not as smart as any of you guys, but in my industry, I kind of got some pretty good knowledge and some pretty good information that I could share. Got some young guys over there that are very tech savvy, they got a lot of ideas. We understand there's safety issues. There's always going to be safety issues in boating. Okay? But if you do this quickly and you ram this down of our throats, you're forcing us to take legal action against our city. We don't want to take legal action against our city. We want to work it out with you, staff, our guys, let's all get together. Our attorney can get together with your attorney. They can work out some verbiage in this thing that clarifies how and when and why you can sell your business. Y'all can preach all day. Ms. Cobb, Mr. Lewis can preach all day about, we're going to let you sell your business, we're not interfering with your businesses, and I understand that. The perception of these people is that that is not right, and the legal opinion that they got is not right. Okay? So when Mr. Parker left here earlier tonight, he left with the words compromise and democracy, and let's work together. And that's what I'm asking you guys to do tonight. Let's compromise, let's put, let's table this moratorium. The city made the mistake and passed that, and passed the extension, which they should not have done. Okay? If y'all want to pass some type of amendment to that, to where, if there's no moratorium in place for the next few weeks, if you put a moratorium in place, I guarantee you it's going to be weeks, maybe months. Why didn't we have a workshop two weeks ago, four weeks ago? I've been to workshops for the last month from you guys. Let's have a workshop, let's have a workshop. Why haven't we had it? Somebody doesn't want it? Is that why we haven't had it? Who's making the rules here? You guys are making the rules? All this staff making the rules? Is the tail wagging the dog? Who's making the rules? Mr. Destin earlier made, I apologize, I don't know if it's time, Mr. Destin made a, passed a motion earlier for a workshop. Why did, can somebody tonight pass a motion for a workshop? Can we table this thing until we all get together, put our minds together, try to work this out for the benefit of everybody? The country is divided. The city of Destin doesn't need to be divided. Right now...
Hey, Mike.
Most of those people think you guys are the enemy.
Thank you.
And it shouldn't be that way.
Mike, I have a question for you. Over here.
Questions?
This way. If you and I were suing each other, would you listen to me and my attorney, or would you listen to your attorney? Because what you're just telling this council is, we shouldn't trust our attorney, we need to listen to you and these guys and their attorney. That's what you just told me, and I can't do that. I have to listen to my attorney. And I know attorneys all the time, we deal with attorneys all the time, we get sued all the time, and this attorney over here is saying one thing, and our attorney is saying something else, every time. So I understand what you're saying, and...
Mr. Brayden, I agree with what you're saying.
And I know your attorney's going to tell you what they want you to hear, because you, as long as you keep paying them, they're going to keep telling you you got a case.
If we put...
But I got to listen to my attorney.
Absolutely. You have to get your legal advice, we get our legal advice. Our legal advices are differing. There's not a doubt in my mind, we put 10 attorneys in this room, we'll get 10 different readings. That's why there's courts, that's why there are judges. All I'm asking here is, in the interest of compromise, to stay out of the courts, to stay away from the judges making the opinions of whether that state statute is effective in this case or not effective in this case. It could go your way, it could go our way. Why don't we try to get together and compromise? We know there's safety issues, let's address the safety issues. We can put the moratorium in place next month, two months from now. Has an amendment that you can't take applications for until we get, until we have a workshop and we have the, I don't know the legalities of it, that's you guys.
Staff, I know we, at the last meeting, we said something about a workshop. Where are we at with the workshop?
Lewis?
It's a matter of setting up a date that the City Council prepares.
Okay, I'll make the motion. Do we set up a workshop?
Between Thanksgiving and Christmas?
Yeah.
Yeah, time certain.
Whatever, whatever, before the first of the year.
I'm going to continue with public comment, and then I'm going to make a comment. I'm going to put myself on the list. Go ahead, who else wants to speak? All right. Go ahead, come on up. No, just come on up, you got to go on the public record, give your name, address, make your comments. It's all right.
My name's Ian Blaze, I live in... My name's Ian Blaze, I live in 702 North Lakeside Drive. I own the Cruisin' Tiki's Destin. We have four tiki's, and they support my family, and I've been here for three years now, and I absolutely love the area, but this is something to consider that I don't hear anybody talking about, but the MPS is also considering action against Crab Island. And in my particular situation, rather than what I heard the other day, and this is off, it's associated in a roundabout manner, but something to consider as an impact. If they, and they're going to, they're shelving there until March 1st, the Grass Island, or the Grass Study and whatnot, if they pass one of their proposals, their strategic plan, they're talking about eliminating captained vessels. This goes for pontoon boats and everything, and from what I, from what it hears, from what it sounds like to me, is the pontoon boats, if there's a chartered captain onboard, they're not going to issue a CUA. That will affect me, that will affect a lot of other companies out there that are offering safe options, captains on vessels, whether they be pontoon boats, you know, glass-bottom boats, snorkel boats, et cetera. If they don't issue CUA, I'm not going to, I'm not going to let Joe from Montana drive my boats. That's not going to happen. It's unsafe, and they're just going to tear it up, they're going to tear my dock up, my landlord and whatnot. So at that point, I will no longer have my business. I'll have to look at something else. Selling assets will be one consideration, but who's going to buy those assets? You know, when you cannot get a CUA. But with that being said, I'll need to find a segue. I'll need to figure out how I can continue to do what I love, working on the water, and pontoon and livery vessels is one of them, and this goes to the BTRs and for new applicants. I mean, I'm not trying to expand enormously like a lot of these guys, I just know that this limitation will affect locals like me, that if I try, because the MPS and the federal government decides to do something that challenges my pursuit, I won't be able to spin off and get four little pontoon boats, so that I can continue to provide for my family. And this is an element that does, it's a consideration, that's all I'm asking.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any further comments? Look around the room again, stand, hold your hands up. If not, I'm going to go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing, public comment portion of it, and we'll go ahead and I'll entertain a motion in a second, and then we'll have discussion amongst ourselves before we take it to a vote. Ms. Abear.
Wait, don't we have a motion and a second on the table?
Rodney already did a motion.
Oh, okay, that's right. I forgot about it. Yeah, because we normally wait and do that after our public comments. In fact, I told you, Rodney, that I would have you up, queued up first, but you, you've made your comments, questions? Okay. Trace them.
I was just going to basically say, what Kim had said was, we could pass this second reading, have the workshop, and if at the workshop we find there are some very big disparities, we can repeal this and start over with a completely different situation. So I kind of have to support that and do the workshop as soon as possible, hopefully the first week or second week of December. I don't want to wait till any later than that. Christmas and all that, everyone's going to have vacation, so I would like our workshop to be very soon, and then that way we can repeal this if we have to.
Mayor? If I may?
Go ahead.
The City Manager asked me to see what we have for the workshop, and I came up December 14. That's the second Monday in December. If that's acceptable?
That works for me, I don't know about the other councilmen. Everybody's kind of giving a thumbs up here, so let's go ahead and set the workshop for December 14th. Better sooner than never.
Do we need to vote on it officially?
I don't think so. We can do that by consensus, right? You could just set out a, if we need, we can do a doodle poll. I mean, we would like all the council members to be there, but if one or two of them can, as long as we had a quorum, I think that would be a good idea to where we can do the sessions. So...
Gary, just real quick there, since we have the motion on the table here, unless Rodney wants to withdraw it, then we need to vote on it. But if you're fine with consensus, then that would also work to...
Right, on the workshop, that wasn't part of the motion. The workshop wasn't. So I understand that. So we're dealing with motion first, and then we can deal with the workshop afterwards, make a final decision. How would you like to do that?
The motion was for a workshop.
Yes, Mayor, the motion was for the workshop. And if we can have that workshop on December 14th?
But your original motion was to approve it, wasn't it?
The motion was to set up a workshop...
Okay.
Before the end of the year. So if we can have that, Lance, if we can have that workshop on December 14th, I will remove the motion on the table, as long as we do have the workshop on December 14th.
We don't need a motion to have a workshop. We just got a consensus, and we have one here, so let's, December 14th, and go ahead and public notice that appropriately. I'm going to go ahead at this time, entertain a motion on this ordinance, the second reading, and so we can have further discussion amongst the council members, because the public comment portion of this is over with. Kevin?
I'll make a motion, so we can get this discussion. That's what we're saying, right? So we can start having a discussion? Fantastic.
There's a recommended motion, or you can make your own?
I don't have the designated motion here, unfortunately. I don't have the iPad version yet of the agenda. I'm still new.
Skip, you have the recommended motion? Skip always has a recommended motion, so if you ever fail, look right here. Go ahead, Skip.
I move to approve ordinance 20-33-CN on second reading.
I got a motion, do I have a second? I got a second. So discussion. You want me to make my comments first? I think, or would anyone else like to weigh in? I'm going to make my comments first, Sid. First of all, the reason this moratorium was put in place is because the public had seen an issue with the proliferation of livery vessels a few years back, and so did the city. They recognized it, and they put a moratorium on the further increase in livery vessels until we could get a grasp on just how much can the harbor take. And I love the references to Miami, because I don't know how many of y'all been to Miami and Government Cut or Biscayne Bay. It's a whole hell of a lot bigger in Destin Harbor, like 20 times bigger. And that entire area, in fact, most of all of Florida isn't concentrated like this harbor. You go anywhere, Johns Pass, Clearwater, Madera Beach, you know, Lucy's Inn, all that, none of those communities have what we have. That's what makes Destin so special, actually, is we have this beautiful harbor and all this activity that goes on, a working waterfront, this festive, what do they call it, festive marketplace. So it's really hard to compare us to the rest of Florida, and that might have something to do with the fact that we have an ordinance that no one else has, because we have something that no one else has, and that's the Destin Harbor. And so, the moratorium was put in place for a reason, and that was to evaluate and assess what's going to be the best for the people that do business, and for the community, and for safety, and all the things that we still don't have all of the answers. In the meantime, during the moratorium, all of the guys that have come up here and don't like the moratorium have been able to continue to do business and be profitable in this community, and that's a good thing. And in fact, there's been comments made about the moratorium, and that's why I asked Pete specifically about the moratorium, because I've fished in a moratorium since 2003 as a federal permitted charter boat operator. And what that moratorium was, it kind of sucked at first, but what that moratorium did eventually, because we were the only game in town, all of a sudden our business gained in value. Our permits went from about $3,000 apiece to now, to get a six-pack permit for a charter, federal charter permits, $35,000. A multi-pack's $2,000 per person, so if you've got a 15-person permit, it's worth about 60 grand. And so that moratorium actually, over time, became a benefit, because it actually put more value in our business. And how the Destin Charter Fleet operated under that moratorium was, we couldn't grow because we're a finite fixture due to the federal government's regulations. So what started happening is, business was there, our business was increased, somebody said that they were turning people away, we were too, so we raised our prices. So we had, we were actually chasing the American dream, and we did it by working less and making more, and then as business approved, we worked more and made more, because we had something that no one else had, and that was the ability to do business, whether in the Destin Harbor or anywhere in the Gulf of Mexico, under a limited moratorium permit. So moratoriums in of themselves are not evil or bad. Michael, your points about understanding the business and the intent, I mean, I've known you for 30 years, you're a good man, and I agree with everything you say, and a lot of the issues that we're having, this disparity in between attorneys' opinions and the confusion over whether you can sell your permits, stuff like that, I think we can hash out in the workshop. If we pass this ordinance tonight, which I hope we do, so we can maintain status quo until we have that workshop, until we have the capacity study, so we gather all this information, even from the industry itself, then when we finally do come back to legislate, we do it as informed, intelligent folks that has heard every aspect of the issue, not a perceived one. The public, a lot of people don't like the livery vessels in the harbor, and they damn sure don't like them on Crab Island, and mostly they're private boat owners. So they don't like it. But we haven't denied that the people that, like yourself, that do business in this community, and it's been profitable, and it's going to continue to be profitable even if we don't resolve this in the next 10 to 11 months, and it goes on into 2022. But when we finally do make legislative decisions, I think it's going to be best for y'all, it's going to be best for the community, and it's going to be good government. And so, I hear the angst and the wailing and asking of teeth about the moratorium. I think our moratorium legally sound, has been for three years. I think it's a necessary thing to continue until we get all these answers. And so my, my personal opinion on it is, I think that the moratorium's not going to hurt any one of these guys that are in business today from being profitable in 2021. And if you guys would use a good business model of working less and making more, and if you're turning down 300 people a day, I'm sorry, but you need to raise your rates. That's just a fact. Now, if you're only turning around 20 a day, well, then maybe you need to reconsider your rate structure. But the American dream is to work less and make more, and the moratorium, as it stands right now, allows you to do that in Destin Harbor. We have not prevented you from operating your businesses status quo since three years ago. I get the message about the younger guys wanting to grow, but if we're going to allow them to grow after we have all the information, maybe we can structure it so it's grown, grown in a manner that's good for the safety, health, and welfare of our community. So, but that's, that's just my talking points. I'm sure I haven't made you happy, Mike, in my position, but I really feel like, at this particular time, this moratorium and the processes that we're fixing to get into, including the workshop, where we get to rub elbows with everyone, social distancing elbows, of course, that we get the discussion, hash out all the minutia, the issues with the issuing of permits and how long it takes, and maybe even the form itself, that we can resolve some of those issues that still don't have much bearing on the moratorium and the capacity study, but it does make maybe your daily application of doing business with City of Destin more manageable and timely and stuff like that. And of course, Joey wasn't here to make any comments. So, under the workshop format, we'll be able to have a meeting of the minds and resolve some of these extraneous issues that really doesn't have actually anything to do with this particular ordinance at this time, because a lot of what we were hearing today didn't apply to what we're actually working on. It was other stuff. And the other stuff, I think, we can resolve in the workshop itself and also set the table for us to do good legislative rulemaking as we get information from our capacity study. So, that's me on the soapbox. I've got a couple people up next. Rodney?
Thanks, Mayor. Just something you brought up, and it made me think that, you know, just because your attorney interprets it, you know, different, that they can't sell their business or whatever, they say, and transfer, whatever. But when this council and the entire staff and our attorneys, everybody is saying that that's not true. If you want to sell it, if you want to transfer, you can do it. I mean, y'all will be able to take that to the bank, in my opinion, because everything's recorded, audio, video. And it just doesn't seem like I would, as a business owner, I wouldn't worry about being able to sell my business if everybody's telling me, you know, that it's basically holding the purse strings, that no, that is not the case, that you can. Sure, love to hear from you. Please.
Go ahead. We'll allow you to interact.
I just wanted to answer, Mr. Braden. I understand everything you're saying. You're perfectly correct. But remember this, in the last three and a half years, since they started discussing this livery vessel ordinance, the City of Destin has not done one thing to help our industry in the last three and a half years. So, understand where these people are coming from when they say they don't trust you saying one thing, you saying one thing, city attorneys saying one thing, our attorneys are saying something else. You have to follow your attorneys. We have to take it our turn. This is not etched in stone. There's a way to get it etched in stone, and we can etch it in stone at a workshop.
That's where I think this...
But there's no trust right now.
I think the workshop, the workshop will maybe begin to establish that level of trust. Okay? Okay, me too, because that's going to be my goal personally.
And just FYI, we get the same thing from the short-term rental people. Same thing, we're picking on them. So, I mean, I understand what you're saying, and I, yeah, and I understand what you're saying, and we need to hash it out at the workshop and make sure everybody's on the same page. What we do.
All right, Kevin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, man, this is a good one to start our first meeting on, right? So, please bear with me as I've got some questions as I've been trying to do research and talking with different people on these things. So, my first question is for Mr. Lewis. Could you tell me specifically, or us, the harbor study that we've been trying to get for a couple of years, I know there's the funding issues and things, what is the ultimate scope of work or the goal that we are trying to achieve when we're asking the Army Corps to give us a harbor study?
Yes, as you know, the harbor is one of the most active places we have in the community. We have business, we have leisure, we have environmental issues, and then, just normal living in the harbor. And so, a combination for those things in that small area is a concern. There've been a number of issues that have been studied by the Harbor CRA. In fact, this is where the whole issue's been discussed thoroughly. And so, when we brought this over to the city council, what we're going to be looking at is the economic viability of the harbor, the leisure aspects of the harbor, and the environmental aspects of the harbor.
Sure.
And what do all these activities mean when they're all put together?
Thank you.
A similar study was done in Key West, and they managed to come up with very sensible regulations and policies after that.
And you said that they told you that they're ready to start in March, but has the funding actually been secured that they are going to be starting, or they're just telling you that they're ready to start?
Yes, we will be starting in March. We have the study questionnaire done, and we have a tentative timetable right now. You will be selecting a committee on the 7th, I believe. Ray, is that correct? To spearhead the study work. And yes, we are going to be launching in March.
Thank you. You know, the moratorium, there's good and bad with it, and I've spoken to many people that have shared the same thoughts. I have some concerns with the way that the moratorium is written, I guess you could say. Just to start with, I mean, I don't know how official these things are, which I know we talked about transferred, and I agree with, you know, Councilman Braden that we said you could sell it, you know, you could sell it, you know. But, you know, just specifically, like, "The entity shall notify the city within 10 days of change of ownership, or any permit shall be deemed automatically revoked." You know, just the language in that alone, to me, I mean, let's just take the case of owners passes away. I mean, I hope not, but let's just say they pass away. I could only imagine what they're going through with the funeral arrangements or whatever else. And then, one day, when they transfer that business to the child or whoever that is, well, hopefully, they remember 10 days from now to also call the city real quick, because if you don't, it says they're automatically revoking you. I mean, that's harsh, in my opinion. And then, the language in the ordinance, there's a few, pardon my, you know, uneducated terms of how you call these sections in the ordinances, whereas parts. But Mr. Lewis just spoke about the harbor study and the importance of it, looking at the entire harbor as a whole, the economic, the environment, and everything. And he wasn't, I didn't hear him specifically say, how are the livery vessels going to impact the harbor? So, we have language in here talking about, "The harbor is severely overcrowded, resulting in a dangerous congestion of vessels," that's all it says. And then, it also says that livery vessel businesses significantly contribute to that due to inexperienced and ineffective vessel operators. And then, it also says, "The livery vessel rental businesses significantly contribute to the deterioration of water quality," which, I mean, if we haven't had a harbor study, how do we even know that they're significantly contributing to that? So, I mean, it's just, you know, what's to stop a current business owner on the harbor to put chartered vessels behind their business? Jet boats, I'm not trying to single anybody out, but I'm just asking, bringing this comment up, but not pontoon boats, but other boats that can be out there. What's to stop them right now from adding five to 10 of those boats behind their business on the harbor? Those five or 10 boats, vessels, are going to add to traffic on the harbor. So, yes, there is a chartered captain there, but if the study is to look at the environmental impact, the economic impact, and everything, well, we shouldn't be just looking at inexperienced captains that are chartering, that are using pontoon boats. So, I just, you know, there's good about the moratorium, but, you know, earlier on, discussions from some of the public about singling out, at the end of the day, we kind of are singling out, because if the owner behind one of these businesses wants to add an allowable item, as long as they meet code, we're going to do it. But they're not going to be able to do pontoons right now because we're singling pontoons out, whether you agree or not with the language of the law. But that, to me, sounds like we're singling a pontoon boat out rather than adding two more paracel boats. And again, if you're a paracel boat owner, I'm not trying to single you out, but it's just an example that if they can meet code and add five more paracel boats, they're going to do it, and we're not going to stop them. But we just added five more vessels in the harbor, shuttling people, as well as the dinghy that shuttles them back and forth as well. Just concerns that I have about the way the moratorium is. And if we do a workshop, from my understanding, a lot of discussion at that workshop, it's going to be about livery vessel application permitting ordinance that Mayor's talking about, and I agree. But then, that's just still going to be way down the line to eventually get that done. And if we want to change the moratorium after the workshop, it's going to have to come back to a first reading and go through this whole process again. And I don't think the workshop is going to look at the moratorium. It's going to look at livery vessel permit section, and which are two separate things. So, I just wanted to bring up those points. Let's see. Yeah, just one more quick question on top of all my comments. I apologize, I told you they were lengthy. If I wanted, as a business owner, to, if I had property and the moratorium wasn't in place, I'm not sure who to direct this question to, but what do I have to prove to you to be able to operate a livery vessel business in the harbor right now? How could I, if this moratorium wasn't in place, could somebody like walk me through those steps as somebody doesn't know that current process?
Kim, do you want to answer that, or Lewis?
I can give you a general answer. Probably staff has the actual details of what they look at better than I do because I'm not involved in application review. But generally, they submit an application. It's reviewed, it should have a site plan. It's reviewed by staff. Staff determines if the code is met, and if the code is met, they are permitted. If you're talking about how to approve them during the moratorium specifically, though, they also have to show that they were legally in existence before the moratorium was enacted, unless one of the exceptions in the moratorium ordinance applies, such as a substantial hardship.
Thank you. I'll just finish with just reiterating the fact that, again, if a new business were to come to Destin right now and want to start a water business, a chartered vessel business, whatever, we'd let them do it as long as they meet code. You know, it's just, it just seems a little odd how we're doing that with this current moratorium, the way it's written.
Well, let me just share with you another little tidbit. Right now, we have 64 state license guides, which they're not under federal regulation, they're under state regulation, they got to buy a permit. They do have to have a U.S. Coast Guard license captains onboard to operate. They have restrictions on where they can operate. They got to stay in the bay or inside of nine miles. So, the state dictates that and the federal government. They don't allow them to run charters. But what they're facing right now is there's, a lot of them are launching their boats at Joe's Bayou or down there at Bing's or in Fort Walton Beach because there's no place for them to operate. So, they're being regulated with the opportunity to do business in Destin because there is no place to do business. And it has nothing to do with moratoriums. It's a fact that there's no slips available for them to operate their businesses out of. And some of that has been with a, as a direct result of proliferation of livery vessels because a landowner can make more money, and livery vessels do too, because they could stick four vessels in a slip and rent them out daily, where normally, just one guy would have his center console located. You see that down at East Pass was the biggest issue. That used to always be what we call the mosquito fleet location. There used to be 35 of them down there. Now, there's about 11 because the rest of them are full of pontoons.
And I hear what you're saying.
So, I just want to let you know that there are issues with, not everybody can do business in the Destin Harbor outside the livery vessel business realm based on the opportunity there's not any slips. Even though there's these profitable charter-for-hire state license guides, they're having to deal with launching their boats every day because there's no place they would love to operate out of Destin. Some of them are trying to unload and load illegally at marinas on Destin Harbor, and our code compliance is starting to nip that in the bud. And so, that's another hardship on them, but it's one that they have to deal with. So, I just want to kind of paint a full picture.
Your full picture is well received. I understand what you're saying. Your first point about the operators, I agree with you, but my point wasn't about the operators because it's about, the harbor study is ultimately to show us how busy our harbor is, impactful, the economy, the environment. So, whether they're inexperienced or experienced, it's a moot point for most of that. But also, if the business owners, the landowners are making more money, like you said earlier, charge more, make more money, work less, I mean, they're living the American dream. And they're doing what you said by making more money with the pontoon boats instead of, unfortunately, some of these hard, you know, these boat captains that aren't operating anymore. I mean, so then, now, we're going to go tell the landowner, you know, "We told you to live the American dream. You're making tons of money, but, you know, it's not fair to the charter boat guys that are going on the..."
That's not the argument I was making at all, Kevin. I was just painting the picture that not everybody can do business in the Destin Harbor that wants to. That's the point.
Yeah, I hear you.
I'm not making a distinction which one's better than the other. I'm just letting you know that there's more to the story than what sometimes you hear just at the podium. My whole focus of this whole thing was to do the harbor capacity study. So, some of the questions you just asked, we have the answers to. And it's not just on our community development person or our land use attorney, who's trying to answer questions about waterways and harbors and stuff like that. So, knowledge is power, and not to, you know, disparage our new council members, but the information in a harbor capacity study will not only help me and Ms. Ramswell, Dr. Ramswell, and Mr. Braden, who've been on this council already six years now, I guess, make a better decision, but it definitely will help the new guys and girls on the block make a better legislative decision by going through that process. So, that's my whole argument. Ms. Cott made it absolutely clear that the results of this harbor workshop, if we realize after listening to the folks that are in the trenches, what their intent and their challenges and stuff like that, well, we may, we can rescind this ordinance in two meetings. So, nothing's etched in stone. But I think, as mayor, this is an opportunity for me to provide some leadership, and I think the leadership is, is let's go through the proper process and gain the proper knowledge. Unfortunately, I know you guys feel like you've been waiting forever, but, you know, when you are going to pass legislation, I think it needs to be passed in a manner that we have all the information. And our final decision may not make anybody happy, but we got to do, as a council, what you think is overall going to be the best for our community for the long term. So, that's my comments. Ms. Abear?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make it brief. Kevin covered several things I was going to ask, but more importantly, reading our permit not transferable of the livery vessel rentals. When we're in this workshop, I think we need to rewrite this verbiage here to make this a whole lot more user-friendly and especially discussing that, you know, if somebody passes away, you got 10 days that you lose it. So, I just want to make sure that, you know, it's on the record that we will repeal this if this doesn't work out after our city council gets together with those that are involved and get this workshop to discuss and get everybody's feelings and effectiveness and make this either work for everybody, or we repeal it and we do something different with it. But I think we need to at least move on and do something with this tonight and then get the workshop together.
All right, so...
Call a question.
Go ahead. Called a question? I'm going to go ahead and take this to a vote. Ray, you want to read it? The preferred motion is that we approve the motion as presented.
I believe the recommended motion, which would approve the ordinance.
Skip read it. We had a second. Here's the vote. Let's just go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Braden, for calling a question. Eyes have it, so moved. Mr. Bowman?
I believe that's the...
That's it, that's it. So, up next, then, Lance. I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
I have a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
The second. Any discussion? Seeing none? Keep pressing your buttons, folks. Mr. King, Ms. Abear? Eyes have it, so moved. All right. Up first, 7A, Councilman Braden?
Thank you, Mayor. Lance, can you comment on that first one? I know we had somebody that's saying that we don't listen to, somebody that's not a citizen of Destin.
Yeah, and I can't speak to what the former councilmen's...
Yeah, and I, I can't speak to what the former councilman's intent was, but I've never known this council to not listen to someone who wanted to speak, speak about a subject. I guess it, it depends on, on how you would go about defining the, the standing issue. It's a legal term, and if, if the question is, do we let people talk, I, I don't ever remember when, when the council didn't allow someone to, to voice their opinion. If the question is, can that person request or have staff do work that requires resources or impacts the priority list of the strategic plan, then I think the answer would be that would take direction from the council to change the resources or, or the strategic plan, because the council approves the budget, council approves the strategic plan, so.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess that begs the question then, who is our public? Because if we get a public records request, or any sort of requests from the public, do we define who public is? Is it just people that live in Destin? Is it people that come here and visit from Minnesota? Or, see, see what I'm saying?
Sure, I think under the statutes, the, the public record request is clear, that, I mean, anyone has the right to do that. Only the residents of Destin have the ability to vote you guys into office, so I mean...
Okay, one of the, the issues that I have is, when we were receiving emails from tourists that were leaving Destin and accusing the city of Destin for sticking them for another $4.50 on the way out the door, when they crossed Midbay Bridge and got told by a plate, we responded to that. We returned their email, or answered their questions, whatever, and that's just one example. But it seems like lately that we, we're picking and choosing of who's sending emails in and want questions or wants answers, we're picking and choosing of who we're actually gonna answer, or whose phone call we're gonna return. And getting complaints about that, that I just can't get a phone call, leave messages, emails, I can't get, can't get nothing, can't get any response from staff. And I'm getting that from citizens of Destin, and from people that are not citizens of Destin. And we also, you know, people that live in another state, but they own property here, we cater to them as well. So the question came up is, you know, are we just going to cater to the people that live here in Destin? Or are we gonna answer and, you know, everybody that, you know, either calls, emails, or whatever, to the city of Destin? So could you answer that? Is that, I mean, are we, are we picking and choosing who, who we're gonna communicate back and forth to, answer their emails or phone calls?
Not sure I, I understand the whole question, but like I said before, the, the council has voted on who our customers are in, in the, in the city of Destin. In priority order, it's the residents, it's the businesses, and then the visitors. And that's, it's up to you if you want to change that, but I mean, that's what the previous, the previous council had voted on, it's in our strategic plan. Do we try to answer questions, routine questions? I believe, yes, absolutely, we do try to answer routine questions, but I'll, I'll go back to what I said earlier. If what the person is asking has got to divert, divert resources, whether that's human resources, or financial resources, or any type of resources, that would, or should be used for other purposes, that would be a policy matter that council could direct us to, to address that. That would normally mean if we're doing our budgeting correctly, that we would have to take that money away from something else and use it towards, towards that project. I don't know if that answers the question or not.
That's, that's good, thank you.
Hey Rodney, I, I know myself personally, I read some of those emails, and some of the people I respond to, like, they'll be complaining about they didn't get a refund or something, you, you know, and I'm sure you do the same thing, I know Dr. Ramswell does, I think all of us do at times. Don't answer them all, because sometimes you just don't have time, but, but I think when, when somebody's asking for a public records request, or, you know, investigations, or maybe your attorneys ought to take this up, you know, some of these folks want, if they want a legal battle, let them hire an attorney and spend their money to, to, to look into those things. Otherwise, I think in, in certain issues, if it's a purvey of this council to look into something, knowing that we're gonna attribute man-hours, we're gonna take away time and effort from some of our projects, or some of the things that the, the people normally do on their daily walks of life, you know, before we task Mr. Burgess to do things, we always look, look at it, and, and we task him. But, but I think receiving outside emails, especially ones that, that are gonna take up resources, I think, you know, Lance owes us a responsibility to come to us and say, "Hey, I'm getting this, it's gonna take X amount of time and X amount of dollars, and this is the opinion of our legal team, and do you want them to spend, you know, be billing us hours to investigate this as well?" And then the council comes together and say, "Yeah, you know what, this is a valid deal." You know, I remember when Mr. Osborne came, talking about the water quality issues, and it, it kind of insinuating that we need to kind of basically slap Walton County upon the head. Well, we got together, Lance and I and the attorneys, and we met with the county, and what we came out of there is, before we go punching somebody in the nose, maybe we ought to look at our own stormwater runoff, and our own challenges with, with water quality, and spend our money and our efforts there first, and, and pat Mr. Osborne on the head and say, "We, we, we believe in what you're saying, but that's not our fight at this time, because we have, we're trying to drain the swamp over here." So, so I, I think that's, on some issues, that's, that's, that's how we have, have to handle it. And if you put it on the agenda, and you bring it up, and we have a discussion, and there's a motion made, that we're gonna spend, expend resources to look into that, then I think that's valid.
My next one under my name is the Noriega Point. Let's go with the number three, the survey that we received. Can you comment on that for us, Lance? I'm sorry, I'm going to the survey, can you comment on the survey, please?
I believe that the, the survey was performed to what staff understood we needed to move, move it forward. Is that what you mean?
All right, I guess so, were you, were you happy with the survey? Are you satisfied with the survey?
As far as I know, this is a reputable firm, and I, I trust, trust that they're doing their best to give us the information we need to make decisions.
Is there a discrepancy, Rodney, that you, that you want to point out?
I'm just, I really wanted to get his input on if that's what he, if he was satisfied with it. It seems like that the, I mean, I've, I've been getting surveys done for years from homes and getting built, and lots, and lots I'm, you know, buying, whatever, and I've never ever ordered a survey and told the surveyor to use my neighbor's deed. So I'm just wondering why the surveyor is, is using somebody else's deed and not strictly using the city of Destin's deed.
I don't understand. Does... I'm sorry, Rodney, I don't know which, which deeds you're talking about.
Has anybody done an overlay? I mean, there's like a 1961 deed, a 98 deed, a 2004 deed, a 2009 deed, that they all denied, I mean, has anybody just laid those surveys? Michael, could you answer that? Has anybody like taken transparency and laid those lines over and see if there's any disparity? Because I'm just a lay guy, and, and I think we all got the same emails, and, and of course, I don't have the transparencies, but looking side by side, and I'm not a surveyor. But everything, the measurements are the same, the lines kind of look the same, has anybody seen a disparity?
Yeah, they're not the same.
Where?
On the survey.
But just point it out, that's all I'm asking.
And you can...
I don't see the, a line on the east-west line or the north-south line.
Damn.
Because maybe if, if you can point out that disparity, then Lance can answer the question a lot better. Or maybe we ought to have the surveyor here.
I mean, we, yeah, I'd love to have him here, but I'd bet good money he won't show up. I mean, one is, how, how did, how did we get a survey with the information that this council ordered, when the surveyor never even set foot back on that property, since the first time he went out there and, and pulled measurements or shot, shot any lines?
When did they shoot the lines?
That was...
When, when did they shoot the line?
I believe the field survey was conducted in August and September.
Okay, so they did a field survey where they went with the transaction, with all the equipment and shot it, and do those lines change sometime between September and the 11th of November?
Yeah, let me address a few things here.
Okay.
Mike did talk to the surveyor this afternoon. The surveyor is willing to come to the next council meeting, or whenever you guys would like. At this point, the surveyor stands by his product. He's aware that there were some questions raised, and he stands by his product. I believe the surveyor's opinion is that the shared boundary line between the park and the one Gulf Shore Drive is the same under all deeds that he has seen. That, that's his opinion, I'm not saying he's correct, but that is the surveyor's opinion at this time. And again, he'd be happy to come to a council meeting and address that and any other issue with council. He just did not have enough notice today.
Dr. Ramswell, I heard you give a moan, so would you like to weigh in?
I'd like to answer your question first.
Oh, okay, Rodney.
And if he, if he can be here next council meeting, would be perfect. We have some questions for him, but on one, I'm looking at on the deed of September 1598, there's a north that he shot, that was shot at that time at 54 degrees, 47 minutes, 38 seconds west, and then on 2009, that same one was shot at 0 degrees, 9 minutes, 43 seconds north. I mean, it, it, he's shooting different lines for, for different things, and it's, I mean, it's not different things, but it's the same line, he's shooting two, two different lines on it. So, yeah, they're, they're different, and, you know, a foot here and a foot there makes a huge difference. So, yeah, I would love to get the surveyor here, so we can ask him questions, ask him what he's been told, why he's doing what he's doing, and why is he not? Why is he using somebody else's, somebody else's property or deed or whatever? Why, why isn't this just strictly the 98 and the 2010? I mean, that's, it's just simple, that's all we want. And we, we want it, all of our property, we want to know what the city of Destin owns and their property, not somebody else's. So, yeah, if you could get him here next meeting, that would be awesome. Maybe we can, maybe we can clear it up. I was on the, when the council last time asked the staff to go to the county to clarify the deed and dedication on the road, did you do that?
Yes, we did.
Lance, I'm asking you that question.
I'm sorry, I didn't know if you were addressing that to me. Yes, I met with the county administrator and the county attorney and, and our city attorney.
So did you, so you, you addressed the deed and dedication in the road, what, what did they say about the, the road that the county was apparently supposed to put in and maintain?
Not, not a lot about that at this time, because we have a pending application, a pending application in, in process. I don't know that, I did not get the impression that the county was opposed to putting in some type of road that met the requirements, but I, I don't think that they feel it's appropriate at this time until our, our process, our, the city of Destin's process for the application that's going forward has, has run its course.
So what, what else did you discuss at that meeting, then?
What are, what are the options?
Did you discuss, did you discuss another, somebody's development order that's...
Yeah, we addressed everything that was related to the road, to include a pending development application.
Because it's... That's not the direction of the council for staff, it was, the direction was to go and ask to talk to the council, the, the county about the deed dedication the city has with the road, and if they were, what their intent was, if they intended to put it in and maintain it.
Well, the, and the answer is no, they do not at this time.
Okay, that's all I have right now, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Brayden.
I have lots.
Before we're done though, I think Ms. Ramswell, Dr. Ramswell, you had some questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, building on a couple of the topics Mr. Brayden brought up. In terms of issues with the survey, right off the bat, they've got that northern property line at 45 instead of 4419, which is something that I had brought up previously, and is something that needs to be investigated and properly notated, because that's a good 30 feet of our Noriega Point property. Also, if you look at page nine of 13 of the survey, where they've got apparent error in deed record in terms of the right-of-way, I, I am not a surveyor, but I can follow numbers and arcs, and this is not. I don't know if he only got one page of a two-page description, or what happened. Every single document, every single deed has the similar curvature of this line, including the 1998 Jerry Miller deed. So I'm not sure what happened to come up with this partial supposed apparent error in deed record, but that is not accurate. And even when you look at Mr., I can't even remember who it was, but one of the emails that we got, where somebody went to the extreme of actually showing how you could draw it, and then actually put it and see how the curvature matches the actual right-of-way, I don't know what this surveyor did, but like Mr. Brayden, I would be thrilled to actually have him come in here and talk with us, and let us go through some of this, because I have concerns, and I have from day one, when they had the wrong parcel numbers on the survey. So I'd love to talk to him, and I look forward to that. What was the second, what was the other thing you just talked about? Deed and dedication. So the dedication clearly states that they will maintain Gulf Shore Drive from 98 all the way to the park. It says that in the dedication, they will build and maintain. Have they maintained Gulf Shore Drive? No, we have, right? And I'm looking at Kyle, but just because I know you were also part of the conversations and discussed a lot of this, but...
Yeah, specifically as to the maintenance, I'm not sure. I mean, we addressed the unbuilt portion through one Gulf Shore Drive specifically at that meeting. Maintenance of the road in general, I, I don't have knowledge of, I don't know if anyone's staff does, I'm sure they do.
Yeah, because when that, when we have that dedication, you, the dedication clearly says, and I know we've got some new folks on here that aren't perhaps privy to that yet, so it'd be great if you guys could get copies of that somehow, I don't know if Ray can send it or, or whatever, but it clearly states that they're responsible for building that extension of Gulf Shore Drive and maintaining it. So for 20, 30 years, we've been doing this, and there's still no road. So the excuse of, there's a pending DO, well, yeah, there's a pending DO on that parcel, but our right-of-way is our right-of-way, we have a pending DO of our own, the Noriega Point project, and that's part of it.
Do we want the county building the road?
They're supposed to.
Did you have a discussion with them about that?
Yeah, the county is not totally opposed to building a road, but you have to understand that it could have other impacts on other issues in the city. For instance, the, the county administrator stated that it would probably come out of TDC funding, which, if you understand how the county does their TDC funding, generally each area has a specific bucket of funding. So if funding is used from Destin's TDC funding... So, if funding is used from Destin's TDC funding, Destin's not going to have that much funding to build or to acquire beaches, for instance, that kind of stuff, to...
And see, I disagree, I mean, I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying, that that's what they said. I'm disagreeing with the fact that TDC money shouldn't be used for a road that the county was supposed to build 30 freaking years ago.
And, yeah, this is just what they said, just relaying it. You know, they also said that they've got their short-term capital improvement plan already set, their five-year capital improvement plan, so it would most likely, unless they were to amend that short-term capital improvement plan, have to go on their long-term capital improvement plan. So, it would be, you know, more than five years before that road would get built in all likelihood unless they were to amend their current capital improvement plan. And then they, I think Lance alluded to this as well, they, you know, in their opinion, the dedication does not speak to the quality of roadway, except to say that a suitable roadway. And what the county does with that road, we might not have control over the quality of roadway. It might not be of the quality that the council would want or the city would want or the public would want in general. Of course, you know, that could be supplemented by council expenditure or something like that, but those are just general concerns. And then, as far as the DO, of course, the pending development application, you know, there can be things that occur throughout that process which affect whether the county has to expend public funds at all to build that road, and that was one of their takeaways as well.
What about the talk earlier during our presentation with Noriega Point, that in Phase Three, they'd build a temporary road, the state would, which would maybe get us by for five years? Because, could we be held hostage to that, basically is what I'm getting at, is, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, because there's going to have to be a road because we have to provide for the public to get to Noriega Point.
Yeah, but they're going to build a temporary road to build the park the state is.
Yeah, the FDP managed project, Phase Three improvements, does have, you have to build a temporary road. Now, if you look at the permitting, the temporary road, it's not the full 100-foot right-of-way that City of Destin owns. It's, you know, maybe 25 feet, and it runs through the middle, so it's a construction road. I think that this council, I think it was Parker, had made a motion before when that was being discussed about what you guys wanted to do with that temporary road once it was built and utilized for its construction purposes. And at that time, the council had decided that y'all wanted to leave that temporary road in place. Now, I mean, council can always change its mind, but I think that as of now, once that temporary road that goes, I believe it's situated in the middle of the right-of-way. And I know that there's discrepancies on where the right-of-way is, but even, and there's really like three iterations I've seen of that right-of-way. There's one where it's currently the permitting for the 95% plans. There's one that the Baskerville Donovan survey did that it looks crazy, and it doesn't even have a point of beginning and a point of ending that's the same. And then there's another that is a slight variation of the first one. It's a little bit straighter, not as curved. So, I think if you looked at the permits for the Noriega Point 95% plan, the temporary road would fit inside that first and third roadway that I've described, the two that are relatively similar. And so, in that manner, the park, the access to the park and the ability to construct the park is not affected, no matter which roadway is the true roadway. And of course, you know, the efforts to determine what the true roadway are ongoing, and throughout the development review process, which will have an indirect effect on this, a lot of that, I think, will be determined through that process. And, you know, because of the special rules related to quasi-judicial hearings, you know, my advice is really to let Lewis and Kim and Lewis's team do their job on that particular matter and do it good like they always do, and they will come back and tell you guys where that true roadway is. I have no doubt about it. If there are particular issues with that, that will, they'll be brought to light throughout the TRC process and that development review process as a whole.
And at that point, when you present it to the council as a developmental order, we can ask all these same questions or get answers to them?
Okay, but that's...
I mean, are we putting the cart before the horse is all I'm asking?
Well, and here's my concern. That DO is for an adjacent property owner. We have our own DO right now, the Noriega Point Phase Three project, and this is the road that goes to Noriega Point that we supposedly got to have parking accounted for, right? We've also got to have ADA parking accounted for, but the temporary road, we're not going to get that, especially one that's, what, 30 feet across? So, that's why my concern is we've got to work something out with somebody, and like I asked a year ago, who's paying for this road? Well, it's not the adjacent property owner because they, that's another issue, but they weren't responsible for building the road, the county was. So, now here we are, 20, 30 years later, there's still no road. We've got a project coming up. We have no way to get to the project nor to supply the proper parking.
Yeah, I mean, there's no doubt. Councilmember Ramswell's right that there is an access issue to Noriega Point Park and its Phase Three improvements. It's just that the timing is such that, you know, and the impact of a pending development application is such that, you know, they'll probably all occur during the same time, and that process may affect who is building that road, particularly whether we want to try and press forward with the county building the road, maybe try and negotiate something out with the county on some of these issues they've raised and their, you know, kind of hard-line stance at this point. So, that's all I'm saying, is that that process could have an impact on the particulars of who is building that road.
Sure, and I see what you're saying, but that doesn't change the fact that we've got a plan for our project, which is in progress right now. So, I'd really like to see us work with the county, talk to the county, bring them here. I mean, whoever the players are so that we can discuss this and get something worked out before here we are trying to build a road and, or not even build a road, but complete a project with no way to get there except on a gravel road that's not suitable for the public by any stretch of the imagination. So, I know there's a lot of tangential pieces and problems that go along with this, but we got to start working that out, especially if you're looking at the other issue that Mr. Braden brought up, which is that property line, because that's 30 feet that could be this way or that way. That also impacts the road and the Noriega Point project. So, there's a lot of overlap here and a lot of things we got to work out here as we're finishing up this amazing project that we have.
Yeah, no doubt about it. We want access to Noriega Point Park, and we want to make sure that anything that's ours is, you know, we're building on and we're able to build on, and there's no encroachments.
And I understand the county doesn't have this in their budget right now, but, and that's not their fault, it's not our fault. This is something that should have been addressed decades ago, and it just wasn't. But that's, we've got to all figure out here together, how do we move forward and address this?
I think probably we let the state build their temporary road to build the facility because we don't have issues with ADA and parking and stuff until they finish the park.
And what's that date? I mean, when are we, when is the expected completion?
Sometime in spring by now because they were already supposed to be started on Phase Three, and they're not, remember?
Yeah.
And so, and I think in the meantime, while they're building the park, which I don't think they're going to get done until April, maybe, or May, the way things are going for them, the application for the development order and that issue will be done, and it'll be before this council. Maybe the road issue can be resolved during that process, and if it's not, then we're going to have to deal with the county because we'll know what's going on.
Well, and the other thing is...
Private and public aspect of it. And then I guess we just have to work with Mel Ponder, our new council, our new commissioner who's representing our area, to light some fires and see what transpires of it. And by no means am I making a recommendation that we wait, but what we do is, I think we got to allow the process to play out, kind of like what we were talking about in the moratorium.
Sure, sure, but allowing the process to play out is one thing, but providing what we have to provide in terms of access to the point. And the other thing to think about, that's an ingress, egress, right-of-way, road, all put together, which means piping, laying lines, all that has to be taken into consideration. So, they need to know where it is, where it ends, where's the property line, and what type of road is going to go where and how deep down to the pipe. I mean, there's a whole lot of other issues that build into this.
That's what I was talking about, the process. You've described every aspect of it. Part of it is what Mr. Braden requested too, was getting clarity from the surveyors on the lines and the surveys. I mean, it's all, it's a procedural-type deal. We're going to bring that guy in to answer those questions for us and where our road is and where our land is. We got a DO that's being reviewed, but I guess it's in the process. I don't know if it's to the technical review committee, but that's going to be presented here, I'm sure, shortly and with some hardcore drawings and recommendations. I know when somebody makes a development order that there's things that the city can request that the developer do that might play into the building of a road, so...
Sure, sure.
That's the only reason, my only recommendation is to let the process play out, is we're going to be getting answers along the way. I think that's going to satisfy all your questions.
Well, it's not going to satisfy all my questions. It might to some degree, but the point, we've got to work with the process to establish what needs to be done before the process is completely...
So, do you have any clear recommendations or things that you want to be seeing?
Yeah, I think we need to...
We can make a list or a motion and go down that route instead of being supposition. But we do have to be careful because a DO is a quasi-judicial proceeding, so we have to be careful that we don't put the cart before the horse and somehow prejudice ourselves in that discussion, you know, because we do have to mitigate legal liability. So, I just want to be, I want to offer caution. I mean, what's your opinion on that, Kyle? You are...
Focus on our project.
Sure.
Yes, I mean, I think Councilmember Ramswell, Dr. Ramswell's right that, of course, we not only should provide access to the Noriega Point Park, you know, we really have an obligation to the public to provide access to the Noriega Point Park. I do think that, given the current circumstances, there is a degree of caution we must proceed with, and if we don't proceed with it, it puts this council at risk and the city at large at risk. I do think that the development review process will bring to light a lot of issues that have been discussed, even as it relates specifically to our park because the issues are so entwined at this point. And specifically as to, I haven't heard any recommendations right now, but maybe one thing we could do, and even individual council members could do, is we can try and open that dialogue back up with the county and see, you know, maybe explain to them the...
Yeah, I think county, us, Taylor Engineering, who's doing our project, I mean, I think all these different stakeholders, we need to all be talking together. And of course, our new council members need to see some of these documentations and make up their own mind, read through the stuff and do, so, yeah, I mean, January, I'm thinking, is probably going to be the soonest, most reliable, and I hate to even say that, but I think timeframe-wise, that might work out best.
Yeah, and to add to that, I would say that also coordinate with FDP, and keep in mind, I did, before the last council meeting, I talked to their general counsel, and we did agree to exchange information. Now, I didn't have any specific information to exchange until this Friday when we got that survey. Frankly, I haven't even looked at the survey yet nor any of the concerns, so I, you know, need to take a look at it before I talk to their general counsel again. But I do fully intend to discuss this with their general counsel, and they were also looking at the matter, and they were going to share any information they gathered with us. So, it is a collaborative process. There's a lot of players involved, and there's a lot of special circumstances that we just got to proceed cautiously with at this point. But, yeah, I do agree that certainly with our, the pending completion of the park, there are certain steps that we need to take to ensure that the public has access to that work.
In the issue that Mr. Braden brought up about the disparities in the surveys, how do we resolve that once and for all?
Well, I think that the surveyor, the surveyor has told us that he would come. He's told Mike that he will come here. Yeah, I'm not a surveyor, Mike's not a surveyor, Lance is not a surveyor. If our surveyor is telling us that he stands by his product, it's hard for us to sit here and say, no, it's incorrect. So, I think maybe once he gets here, maybe he can explain to you why he arrived at the conclusions he did. Maybe he will reevaluate it in the next two or three weeks, whatever the next council meeting is, and get us something new. I don't know, you know? I can just say that I think when the surveyor comes and explains it, hopefully that'll clear up questions or maybe it'll raise more questions. I think that we just need that piece of information before we move on from that survey issue.
All right. Mr. Braden, was that it for tonight on your side?
Yeah, I just don't know why we had to proceed with caution to identify our own property.
Because it's directly related to a pending development application.
So, why are we more worried about somebody's development application than we are our own property?
Because there are particular rules in a quasi-judicial hearing where you can't just take certain actions that might affect that pending application process.
If it's, if our property is being affected, then we need to take action.
It's not just, it's not just our property that's affected.
Then what's it affecting?
The surrounding properties.
But if my neighbor is claiming part of my property is his, I'm going to take action and prove that this is, get a survey and prove that this is my property.
If we claim that part of our property is his and he's got a pending development application on it, which creates, that creates a major issue.
Yeah, for him.
For us, too.
How was that?
Because if we do stuff outside the development review process and it comes time for the part of the council session where I actually just ask you to disclose ex parte communications, you guys have all had ex parte communications because of that process, then there's going to be a major issue about whether this council is going to be able to provide a fair and impartial hearing at that quasi-judicial hearing.
In other words, if we get the cart before the horse, we are not mitigating our financial and legal risk. If we go through the process, that mitigates that risk, and we still get to the same point without exposing ourselves.
How do we protect our interests without...
Through the process itself, I think.
Well, I'm asking the attorney.
Yeah, I mean, I think that the process, that the community development team and land use attorney will be looking at this kind of stuff in their development review process, and I think that that process is intended to not only provide a fair and impartial quasi-judicial hearing for the applicant, it's also intended to benefit the city. So, in that process, you have both those at once, whereas if you go outside that process, you might be benefiting the city in the immediate future, but you can't ensure a fair and impartial trial. And ultimately, if the council was to deny or approve a development application with conditions, for instance, that might not be a defensible position to be in if they were to file some sort of legal action in the circuit court, for instance. Whereas if you go through the process, and it makes it a much more defensible position.
So, I'm going to make one comment about an email that we got today, and I know not to go too much into it, but we did get an email today from an adjacent property owner, and I will say I had to laugh out loud at several items of information they brought forth as proof, since the proof was coming from their own attorneys who represent this property owner. So, there's a lot more I could say about it, but I know this is a legal issue, so I'm not going to get too in-depth until it comes time to actually get in-depth on this.
All right, it's your turn.
I have nothing. Welcome to our new council members.
Righty roo. All right, Mr. Destin is in an enviable position, and I'm glad I'm not in at this particular moment. Mr. Destin, if you're listening, God bless you, sir. Mr. Overdeer.
I have nothing nice except for welcoming new members, and I'm looking forward to working with all of them.
Councilwoman Abear.
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember King.
Just, we just want to say thanks for staff making us feel so welcome. I'm excited to get to work for our town and work with current council and just really excited to be here, especially after this fun-filled meeting. It's been great. Thanks for having me.
And it's only 10:30. And my promise, my pledge, I think, when I ran for election was to keep it, that we would get done by 8 o'clock. So, I have failed miserably in my campaign promises two years ago. But tonight's meeting was a special night, of course, and there was a lot on the agenda apart from all our presentations and swearing-ins and all that. Having this many public hearings, a couple of them controversial, just requires time, and unfortunately, I failed. Councilman... Councilmember Schmidt, you had the Christmas parade as one of your items and we'll start there.
I appreciate it as well. Thank you for the warm welcome that we've all received. This is, I'm looking forward to it as well. I did add the Christmas parade and solely, and I know it's probably a weird thing to bring up on your first night in the council, but it's November, like November 16th and growing up and being here for a long time in Destin, you know, the Christmas parade is a very special thing for me, my family, the kids and everybody. And people have been asking me recently, and I actually got a call from staff asking my thoughts about some things. And I brought up the question today of what's the deal with the Christmas parade? There's not a current decision been made about a Christmas parade in Destin yet.
Boat parade, the boat parade is on.
Boat parade's on, we did the pinfish tournament, we're going to be doing some basketball with different rules, but there's currently not a decision about a Christmas parade. And I, I mean, we're probably already limiting the amount of entries already since it's, I imagine, the next three to four weeks at the, at the most. But I would really like to see if tonight we could give staff the support to proceed with having a Destin Christmas parade. I know there's concerns with what's going on in 2020, but I also think that the responsible actions of adults and everyone can take those precautions and spread out amongst a mile and a half parameter and social distance if they feel they have to, but, or wear masks. And, you know, if we don't want to allow candy being thrown, things like that, I mean, sure, but I truly think that we're already going to have less participants just because of COVID and also because the Destin Mill School dazzlers might not have time to put a float together now. So, but I would just hoping we could get support from council to get staff to proceed with the, so I'd like to make a motion to recommend to staff to proceed with the Christmas parade.
I second it.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. Overdeer.
I just, I think that, I mean, there's going to have to be an awful lot of discussion about it because I will tell you, this is not, this situation we find ourselves in is not getting better. It tends to get, it's tending to get worse. And to do something like this could be perceived as being kind of very responsible to get that many people together. And you, you've been to the parade before, I've only been to it just a couple of times now, but I will tell you, I mean, there's literally thousands of people out there and they are everywhere. And how you're ever going to get them, even if they, you're never going to get them all to wear masks. And, and the other thing is, is a lot of the kids don't have to wear masks. How you're ever going to get that to be social distancing and do all the things that you really need to do to make it a, an acceptable risk for all those people that are going to be out there? I don't, I don't know how you're going to do that. And so there's going to have to be an awful lot of discussion about that before I'd be in favor of it.
Rodney.
I'd like to hear from Lisa Firth, if she's still with us, but I know, I think she told me that Crestview, Niceville, Fort Walton, everybody's doing their Christmas parades.
Mayor?
Go ahead, Teresa. This is up your alley.
Yeah, Lisa and I had talked about it and if you watch the science, it's not the crowds that you get the infection from because everyone's very cautious about, they're wearing masks. It's when you're around your small groups because people are letting their guards down. And I think that the large crowd, you know, you're out in the open, it's not like we're going to be in a closed building doing this. I really feel like people are smart enough and that other cities are doing it. And I think that we need this. This is something that, you know, it's not a lot of time to put it together, but we need to do what we can to give people some sort of normalcy. And, you know, if they're feeling like they shouldn't be out, people don't get out. So I think we should go for it.
Maybe we could extend the path of the Christmas parade, start at the track versus starting at the May Street to spread the people out. I do know in some other communities, mostly controlled by Democrats, sorry, Charles, that they've done Christmas parades where the floats and the bands are all socially distanced and it's a drive by. You actually, the people that want to go to the parade, drive by the parade participants. It's almost like a parade in reverse. So I'm not sure I want to go down that route, but that is, that is an option considered. But I'm with you, Kevin. I mean, it's just, I mean, we're all going to Walmart every day, Home Depot, and we do the things to stay safe. Mr. Menchel's wearing a mask right there and there's nobody within 20 feet of him because he doesn't want to get COVID-19. So he's made a personal choice, you know? We got these little screens, our staff's made a choice for us here at the dais. I, I think that, that, you know, not to get too political, but Mr. Trump had his rallies and it was criticized. Everybody was out dancing in the street with the election results. They weren't criticized, so that's, I love a parade, you know? And I think we do all those things from our information, public information person to make sure that we recommend that if you're in line at the parade, that everyone wears a mask. And if they all are wearing masks, we'll throw them some candy. If they're not, we won't throw them any. Just put a little caveat. So we have a motion, we have a second.
Yeah, and I'll just, I mean, it's, I think the proactive approach is, is that majority of Destin citizens are probably thinking there is one. And if we come out in a week or two weeks or whatever and all of a sudden say there's not one, I mean, there's a lot of backlash I feel that would also come. I just, I just, I don't think we want to do that, but.
All right. This is an issue of political correctness. We have a motion, we have a second, so I'm just going to put y'all's fanny on the fire. Take a vote. If I was voting, I'd vote yes, just so the public can know.
Hey, y'all, I'm recovering from COVID.
I was going to make mention of that, Dr. Ramswell. I don't blame you, okay? Of course Rodney's fearless because he's already been there and done that, so he's a yes, all right? And most of our staff members this year are going to go to the parade fearlessly. So we're voting?
We did.
And we voted and it was five to one. Eyes have it so moved.
And just so you know, I'm, I'm not against the parade. All I'm saying is it's-
Oh, no, you voted for it.
It's, it's going to, it's going to take some serious planning to get, to make sure we do it the right way.
We'll trust Ms. Firth and our public information director and our staff to put together good ground rules for a Christmas parade in the city of Destin. All right, Catherine?
If we just tell pepitos to shut down a little early, people won't hang out by pepitos and then they'll spread down.
There you go, there you go. There's always, we got to be innovative, of course. All right, I've been talking way too much, so I'm done. Ms. Cop.
I don't have anything tonight other than welcome to the new city council and look forward to working with all of you.
And lastly, but not the leastly, our city attorney.
Yeah, a couple of things. Echo Kim's sentiments, welcome to the new council members, glad we kept you here for four and a half hours tonight, it was a fine initiation. Second of all, good news, we had the second closing on our beach acquisition project today. So one more parcel to go in phase one and we'll have completed that portion of the park. So just want to share that.
Job well done by all staff, Lance Webb, our Florida land grant folks, everybody. It's just, it's going to be cool when we have that dedication. And it's just, and the good news is, is we're not done, even with, with that. And so everybody can put a feather in their cap, we've given our citizens a hell of a Christmas party, or a Christmas present so far, 2021. With that being said, this is the last opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone that has any comments? Step up, step right up.
What?
Hey, if you stay four and a half hours, you have every right in the world to come up to this podium and I may even give you more than three minutes, sir.
Citizen Steve Menchel. First of all, congratulations to the new council, wish you nothing but the best. Mayor, I just want to say a couple of things. You asked about what any mistakes with that, with that survey company. I just want to bring a couple of things everybody's attention for your consideration. First of all, Dr. Ramswell said this, that right off the bat in one of their surveys, they wrote the wrong parcel number down. Anybody can make a mistake, but again, some of their things you call into question. When Mr. Burgess tasked this last thing, it was spot on. Everything was, was there, okay? The things we asked for in this last one, in the fourth one, okay? But here's something that you have to keep in mind and consider. This is the fourth tasking we've given them for the same survey. Each and every one of them have been different. The field survey, the field survey was done on August the 7th. Nothing has changed from that field survey. So I'll give you an example. This is akin to, six months ago, we asked staff to go out and count the white cars in the parking lot. They came back in and they gave us that count. Three months later, we say, oh, by the way, how many blue cars were out there? You didn't ask me to do that, okay? We have asked the survey company to do different things three different times and they're still operating off of the first field survey. It doesn't work. So that's just something for consideration.
Yeah, and not to burn, this stops your time, but transactions, if they've shot transactions, those transactions, as far as they're concerned, don't change, correct?
They didn't do it the first time. They weren't tasked to do that the first time.
So they didn't, they didn't shoot it?
If you look at the original taskings from step day one, from back in May or when the first thing, that's what I'm saying. They're not same same. So there's the problem, okay? Aside from the, the lines and everything else that are talking about, they are operating off an August survey based on a November request. So again, like I said, if you go out and inventory the white, for white cars in the parking lot, you've got an accurate count on that. But if we change that request and we don't go back out and look at it, it's not accurate. So that's just something to consider.
So bringing the surveyor in is going to solve that particular issue?
Well, in fairness, it's just, he did it, but again, if you don't do a field survey and then again, anybody can make a mistake, but he listed the long parcel number. That's just basic stuff. Where was the, so they're not without errors. That's, okay. And then in follow up with the parade, all I'm going to tell you is, I'm obviously big on parades and y'all will enjoy it for sure. I've been to a whole lot of parades in New Orleans. I can only tell you, and Teresa, you, which you talk about the outside and everything else, I totally agree with that, but I can tell you, and you can check with this, last, this year, when New Orleans had their parades, they had a tremendous spike after the parades. Now there again, it's not just one day and it's just not a thing. They're days and days and days, but they definitely had a spike. But as long as you do it carefully, okay, so that's it. Again, congratulations to everybody. In regards to that survey, you new guys, y'all got a lot of catching up to do, okay? And thank you.
Thank you, Citizen Menchel. With that being said, is if nobody else wants to speak, meeting adjourned.